All right.
Our pleasure ladies and gentlemen, the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, roll please.
Ms. McCullough?
Here.
Mr. Everson?
Here.
Mr. Oliver Jenkins? Mr. Corbin?
Here.
Mr. Webb?
Here.
Mr. Shine?
Present.
Mr. Sam Jenkins?
Present.
Okay, at this time, Vice Chairman, I entertain a motion from you for the approval of the minutes.
It's been moved.
Okay, it's been moved by the Vice Chairman, seconded by Councilman Mike Corbin, for the approval of the minutes for the Administrative Conference, Monday, February 10th, City Council meeting, Tuesday, February 11, 2014, Amendment Number One to Council proceeding, February 11. All in favor, vote yes opposed is no. Minutes have been approved by a six oh vote, one out of the chamber. Okay, Mr. Mayor, it's always a pleasure to see you back, and I appreciated all the good news that you brought back on yesterday. I was thinking you'd bring us some fruit back, but I forgot, this is not the fruit season, so peaches will be here pretty soon, and Jeff just loves peaches, we're in your hands, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. We will make all of our communications here at one time, both official and unofficial, so that we can save a bit of time here if you don't mind. Mr. Chairman, as you all remember, on yesterday, I took the opportunity to express great appreciation to one of Shreveport's own, on the fourth time in 66 years that you've had someone from the city of Shreveport who's been privileged to serve as King of the Mardi Gras. We also had a young Ms. Bicknell, who was the Queen of the Mardi Gras, I'm not quite sure what the number of times that we've had a queen, but I do know that there are, in fact, only three individuals, because one of the Kings actually served twice. And so, Dr. Larry Allen was the King of Mardi Gras for the 66th Annual Washington Mardi Gras, put on this past weekend in DC by the misty crew of Louisiana. Had the opportunity to represent not only the state, but the city of Shreveport, Northwest Louisiana, quite well. In addition to it being a great deal of fun, we also managed, in conjunction with our partners in local government, the Paris of Caddo, to host a good number of folks who are economic development prospects for this region, one of which has already landed, and that is the good folks from the Computer Science Corporation. If you all remember that particular entity, which is a Fortune 150 company, I believe, announced on last week that they will be bringing some 800-plus direct jobs, another 800 indirect jobs, to the Cyber Innovation Center over in Bossier City. It will serve as the anchor tenant within the National Cyber Science Park, and we believe it is the next step towards helping to build the knowledge-driven economy for Northwest Louisiana. In particular, we want to express thanks and appreciation to Mary Lou Walk and the members of the City Council, as well as Bill Optimus and the members of the Bossier Parish Police Jury. As you all know, that was a 50-plus million dollar investment made by local government to the Cyber Innovation Center, that was matched with another 57 million from the state, that resulted in that facility being stood up. And this particular job announcement from the Computer Science Corporation represents the first significant job presence since that effort was kicked off, and again, we believe it's going to be something that will be transformational in terms of helping to develop and grow the knowledge-driven economy for Northwest Louisiana. Also want to announce, members, that this coming week will kick off the annual celebration of Women Weeks activities here in the city of Shreveport. Those will start on this coming Sunday. Monday morning, at 9:00 AM, will be the kickoff breakfast at the Shreveport Convention Center. For those of you who are able to attend, please reach out and contact Bernadine Anderson in my office, so that we can make arrangements for you all. There are a week of activities that will follow, with everything from a luncheon that will be put on on Tuesday, where Attorney Allison Jones will be the keynote speaker. There will be a starting over financially seminar held on Wednesday, on, also a legal education seminar that will be on Wednesday as well. On Thursday is the annual Cora M. Allen Luncheon and Fashion Show that will be held at the Shreveport Convention Center. A good friend and a Shreveporter, Dr. Melissa Fornor, will be the guest speaker for that effort. This is always an opportunity for us to be able to come together and connect old, young, and middle-aged women of Shreveport, Northwest Louisiana, to get together, to learn about the history of women in this area, to connect, and to empower, and to ultimately advance their interests and their causes. Lastly, Mr. Chairman, we are delighted to be able to be here today, and welcome all of these good folks who are here, engaging and participating in the civic process. There are those who are here live, there are those who are watching us, any who take time to be a part of the democratic process, our folks who are both appreciated and respected, and we look forward to the dialogue that we will hear from those who are here today to share with us. Also want to join, I know this is coming up from one of the council members, in expressing great appreciation, for Robert R. Dekay, who was here, a young man who I know is a member of the Peace Corps, who I'm assuming is going to be honored by-
We didn't want you to-
-council member Corbin at the appropriate time.
Right, we didn't want you to steal his thunder.
Oh, we shall not. We shall not, but we look forward in expressing our support and appreciation as well. And with that, Mr. Chairman, we turn the proceedings back over to you and the members of the council.
Before I turn it over to Mike, I told Mike I wanted to steal just a little bit his thunder. We have one of Shreveport's building blocks here, Mr. Harris Layton. And Harris, I know we didn't send anything to you, but before Mike gets into his introduction, if you don't mind, I'd just like for you to come forward and at least say hello, because you have been one of the movers and shakers in the city of Shreveport, and you heard the mayor talking about jobs and all. You were providing jobs, you were providing jobs for people here in the city of Shreveport when he was still in diapers. So, if you want to just come forward up to the mic and just say hello, and then we'll turn it over to Mike and let Mike introduce some of your fine bloodlines.
I appreciate very much what all you fine folks do, and the time that you give this requires a lot of effort and energy. Oliver, nice to see you. I see, but they allow you to come in late.
Good to see you.
That's all I have.
Well, Harris, so good to see you. So good to see you.
Pleasure to see you, Joe.
All right.
They still require two seats on the airline for you.
Yeah, 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 Harris.
One for each seat with no diaper.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I thought you were taking a good amount of weight off when you didn't need two seats.
Yeah, yeah, Oliver tried to get him to go on a diaper.
I try to be considerate of my fellow passengers, Mr. Layton.
All right, thank you, Harris. We're going to turn it over to Mike. Mike?
I'm not sure what's left. From time to time, you know, I think, or all too often, we watch the news, and we see reports of things, and we, you know, see reports of young people who have taken a wrong turn, and we hear criticism of our school system. And I thought it would be a good opportunity to have a success story come up and let us hear what can happen from a young person from Shreveport, and he's just one of many who are doing the right thing. At this time, I'd like to recognize Mr. Robert Dekay.
Robert, you got a good bloodline, too.
Well, I was about to say, it's a hard act to follow, you know, coming after my grandfather like that. He's really done a lot in this town, in this city.
He has.
So, I'm actually honored to be able to be recognized for what I have done in my time in the Peace Corps, and it's a privilege to come and tell you how the Caddo Parish school system prepared me for this, because I was, from Eden Gardens to Middle Magnet to Caddo Magnet High School, I've been here learning, and I really do attribute Caddo Magnet High School to be the really catalyst which led me to the success that I've seen so far, because the educational environment there that's been created by Mary Rounds and the educators, it's just phenomenal. And there's a few that I'd like to recognize individually, as Ms. Laura Addington, who's my Spanish teacher, who really pushed me on the idea of learning foreign languages and the value of learning about foreign cultures and what it has to do, and then Ms. Sharon Buford, who was the world history teacher in my senior year, who really pushed it home that the idea of a country being able to define itself and write its own history, and the value of that, and why it's really important. And after, you know, during my time in the Peace Corps, I really saw the value of that and how important it is, especially right now, considering I did the Peace Corps in Ukraine. And as you might have seen, it's been in the news a little bit, and as a country going through the growing pains of changing from communism to a democratic nation, there are, this is kind of the ideal moment for people to come in and to help. Unfortunately, there's actually been an evacuation of volunteers for a few days, just for safety's sake, but I really do think that the time here has kind of led to me where I am now, and it's a very big privilege to be here and have this pedigree coming from me, not only from family, but also from Shreveport, because it's really interesting that I was really, I was the only Louisiana volunteer that I know of that was in Eastern European countries for the Peace Corps. And it says a lot that most people come from one particular area, and then when a few people from Louisiana start coming, start entering it all, it moves, it says a lot for the state and what the educational system can do and how they can go places. So, it was, it's been an honor and a privilege to come talk, as well as to just be, I don't know, be part of the Louisiana system, because it's fun and it's interesting, and it's not something that everyone has, because the background that most people who I've met, it's not near as colorful or interesting as Louisiana. And I know that we have had quite a few negative stories, but there are just as many positive. They don't really get the limelight as often, because they're not near as interesting, so, yeah.
Robert, besides the Ukraine, where else did you serve?
Um, I actually, with the Peace Corps, I was only in Ukraine, but before I joined the Peace Corps, I spent time in Central America, teaching English and working in different non-governmental organizations, trying to do everything from, like, teaching, well, first was teaching English, but also was building schools and helping to work in education systems, like doing anything from rudimentary math to handwriting skills. And it's actually similar to what I did in Ukraine as well, like, the main project was actually very similar to Strack and what it does here, which is the cultural enlightenment, where we were bringing in multidisciplinary arts festivals and doing projects very similar to Unseen, actually. And it was actually, it was very interesting to have completed that project and come home and see that here in Shreveport as well. But I have actually visited a few other countries as well, there's no reason to list them all, but the places where I was actually living and was working for an extended amount of time was Nicaragua and Guatemala. And being in Nicaragua for, you know, as many months as I was, and seeing that background and seeing all of it, it's poverty, but at a different level altogether. If people from Shreveport who complain about poverty and how bad things are are able to go to other areas, to Nicaragua, or to Ukraine, or other places, and see just the vast difference, the, you know, I'm sure the understanding will be a little bit different, so.
What's next?
What's next? Well, actually, the, after returning from Peace Corps, I spent a few months studying for the Foreign Service Officers exam, and I have taken it, and I'm waiting to hear the results now. So, my, after I graduated high school, I created the five-year plan, which culminated in me joining the Peace Corps, and now I have an additional ten-year plan, because the State Department was a little more lengthy and difficult process to get into, and so that's my current goal, and I'm in the process of applying for jobs in the, within the government, because after Peace Corps, I have what's considered non-competitive eligibility for jobs, and I'm trying to apply that to governmental jobs. So, that's my current situation.
You know, I actually have a friend who just started her assignment about a year ago in Kenya, that is, grew up in Shreveport and many of the same schools as you, and started out in the Peace Corps, and just started, like I said, about a year ago, when she went over to Kenya, and has been, it has, she's had a similar plan as you, and she's very happy to have lived it out.
Yes, it's-
Love to put you all in touch if you'd like to.
I would love that, absolutely, yeah. It's a very challenging path to follow, but one that has many rewards, and it's something that I think not too many people are aware of, and it's a situation, like, the idea of Peace Corps really isn't as commonly taught and discussed as I think it should be in the system here in Shreveport. And I had one teacher, when Ms. Buford mentioned Peace Corps for the first time, that's when it kind of resonated with me, and I've stuck with it ever since. And maybe your friend had this similar situation, we had a teacher from either Magnet or somewhere around here, she was able to inspire-
She was a Byrd grad, but-
Well, I actually have a friend who I'm probably going to go visit his high, his class, who is John Larry, who is a teacher there, and he asked me to come and talk about my time in Ukraine, so I'm probably going to do it next week or so.
Great, great. Well, fantastic. Well, I'll be happy to get you some info on, Carla Roberts is her name.
Okay, fantastic.
Just serving there.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I sort of want to compliment this young man. You present yourself very well, you have a lot of charisma, and your impression, when you said you were looking for jobs in government, remind me of another young man named John L. Kennedy, who was looking for a job in government. Who knows, one day we may see you standing in Washington DC fulfilling that hope and dream that you have, but I'm very impressed with you and your worldview and the exposure that you've had, so congratulations, and you certainly do Shreveport well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And Robert, before you go to DC, I wish you'd stick around Shreveport. We need, you know, your grandfather tell you, we need a lot of young talent around here, and not only Shreveport, but the state of Louisiana. For some reason, it kind of seems like we've kind of had a brain drain on Shreveport and Louisiana, it looks like a lot of folks want to go to Houston, and Austin, and Dallas, and Atlanta, and, you know, we want to keep some of you all around here, and I guess you can kind of look at my hair, this isn't really gray hair, this is really a frosted that I have, but I'm kind of, I'm kind of getting up, and we're going to need a lot of young people like you, to stay around and to make sure that we grow. A lot of young people who've had a lot of experiences and who are really educated, you know, who have some wisdom and some understanding, and who can help us move this area forward, so.
Well, I would be honored and be a good privilege if I was able to do that here in Shreveport, so.
Well, won't you stick around, and your grandfather started off years ago, so the only thing you got to do is just build on what he started.
Build on, build on. Well, we'll see, we'll see what I can do.
All right. Thank you, Robert.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming down.
Any other council members have any?
I'd like encourage him, if you consider coming this way, to move in District A. Consider moving in District A.
Okay, well, I'll have to learn what the difference between District A and-
I want you to just move in Shreveport.
Then I'll look into it.
Yeah, you do that now, and I'm inviting you to District A.
Okay, thank you very much.
Robert, I hope you just stay in Shreveport. We just, we need, and we need this coming together in Shreveport, and we need to look at Shreveport as being one, you know. So, this is what we got to do.
I guess it's, so far, it's been the incentives in other cities has apparently attracted other, the graduates from here to go seek out what's in Houston, or New Orleans, or just big-name areas.
Right.
Shreveport's growing, and it has been for a little while, not only with the movie industry here, but there's just been a push in most individuals as well, and that's why I think little things like Unseen, and Strack, and projects like that are just the beginning of a movement that can really keep people in this town, so.
Right.
Let's see where it can go.
Thank you, Robert. All right, let's move on.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Before Robert leaves, I want to express, from Mustang to Mustang, congratulations, very proud of you, and very encouraging to hear you share the role that your public school education played in terms of helping you to achieve the goals that you've achieved. And as a fellow Magnet graduate, I'm very proud of what you've done, and you are a proud member of the Mustang Nation, and you represent us very well. Congratulations to you, best of luck. And Mr. Chairman, before we go on to the next order of business, I thought, I saw Paul Pratt here.
I saw him outside, but-
Saw him outside.
He was outside.
Don't want to steal his thunder, but I think it kind of got out of the bag a little bit over the weekend.
Is he still here?
Over this past weekend, you all probably heard it announced, that the Independence Bowl has picked up a new title sponsor. It will be the Duck Commander. That announcement will be made official on tomorrow, but we want to express great appreciation for Paul Pratt as the incoming chair of the Independence Bowl, John Hubbard as the outgoing chair, Missy Sudders as the executive director, and all of the folks who go all the way back to Carl Milkovich, and Mike McCarthy, and all of Orvis Segler, folks that I know for a fact, many times signed personal notes in order to guarantee payouts and what have you for the Independence Bowl. Independence Bowl was born in 1976, it's the 11th oldest bowl in the US. I know some 16, 17 years ago, there were only just over about a dozen and a half bowls. Now, in today's environment, there's over 34, I think somewhere approaching 35, and yet the Independence Bowl is still there, and Shreveport still represents the smallest city of all of the communities that host bowls, to host a Division 1A, or now FBS Football Bowl Series city. And so, our thanks and appreciation to Paul and his team. We look forward to welcoming the Roberts family here tomorrow. We think that this particular partnership is one that will be particularly valuable, and that it has the opportunity to be able to connect and brand two things that are uniquely Louisiana, and North Louisiana in particular, that's the Independence Bowl and the Duck Commander family. So, our thanks and appreciation to them, and we want to make sure that they know that they are certainly welcoming to see us in Shreveport.
When y'all see Paul, tell him he didn't miss anything, the mayor took care of it, so.
Is it true that Shelley and her staff are going to paint the turf camo?
Those things are being researched now as we speak.
All right.
We know there's a little red, white, and blue that'll soon be vanishing.
All right.
That's the one thing that is true.
Okay, and, Mr. Mayor, does that wrap up all of your communications?
As it does, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Property standards, Wes, Ms. Farnell.
Mr. Councilman, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Farnell, that's a nice little fancy look today.
Thank you, sir.
All right. There, does that mean that was an increase in pay? Not without y'all knowing it, Mr. Stevens. Okay, I didn't want you to slip that thing in on us, there. Okay, any questions for Ms. Farnell pertaining to property standards?
The only thing I have is, I may tell you about over here, and just ask, there's somebody in the chamber right now who had a question that I may just put you in touch with. Mr. Lee?
And maybe, uh- Ms. Johnson?
I don't think Ms. Johnson has a property standards issue, she has maybe more of a public works issue. She's coming down to talk about some trees, I think, maybe in a right of way, maybe on private property, and she's been into a debate.
The Swep Co., yeah.
With Swep Co., I think, and maybe the city about who's responsible for cutting the trees. I believe that's why she came down.
Mr. Harris will get, Mr. Harris will get whether.
Uh, Mr. Harris, Ms. Johnson. Okay, Mr. Sebberly, revenue collection?
Yes, sir, we'll have it at the first March meeting, and we'll discuss it at that time.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
All right, Ms. Scott? Everything's been taken care of? Thank you, Ms. Scott. Okay, Ms. Sanders, you want to kind of, just kind of give us a synopsis of-
Yes, sir. Good afternoon. I'd just like to report that the Master Plan Committee goal to facilitate the establishment and formation of the Shreveport Council of Neighborhoods is complete. That group is up and running on their own, so thank you to the City Council, as well as the mayor's administration, for your support and assistance in helping us make that happen. The next Master Plan Committee meeting is this coming Monday, March 3. The only item on our agenda is a presentation from a volunteer group associated with the community advisory group. They're giving a presentation on a food systems master plan, which addresses several of the sustainability goals and recommendations of our master plan. And finally, our Unified Development Code consultants are in town this week, just to go over some of their findings with us on our zoning and development regulations, and that's all I have.
Any questions from Ms. Sanders?
I have.
Okay.
On the sake of my family from the Martin Luther King community, could you maybe touch on the Council of Neighborhoods?
Sure.
That's been recently established.
Sure, the Council of Neighborhoods, just as a reminder, is, was intended to consist of representation from our Shreveport neighborhood associations, to come together to not only facilitate communication among our different neighborhoods, but also to serve as a communication point for our local governments, to get information out to our citizens and stakeholders, particularly with the Unified Development Code. The City Council certainly could make presentations to the Council of Neighborhoods. I believe, Councilwoman, that one of the executive committee members voted, was voted into, let me say that again, one of the Martin Luther King Neighborhood Association members was voted into the executive committee, I believe it was the week before last. She is a member-at-large, and we welcome her greatly, she's been a very good asset in creating that Council of Neighborhoods. So, we're really looking forward, or the MPC is looking forward to working with the Council of Neighborhoods as it relates to the Unified Development Code.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we're still looking for you, Ms. Rogers.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Dar.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Dar, would you please forward the most recent comprehensive mailing list for the Council of Neighborhoods to Bernadine and Stephen? I want to extend an invitation to all of the members and the association members for an event that is going to be held by the Police Department on March 6. It is their annual caucus of neighborhood groups, neighborhood watches, and what have you. It will be a great opportunity for them to get oriented into all of the various things that we do, from a neighborhood watch, block watch, as well as to learn how to connect and interact with members of the Take Back Your Neighborhoods team, so they'll have a chance to find out who their community liaison officers are, as well as who the property standards officers are for their particular neighborhoods and areas. We'd love to have all of those folks who are a part of the Council of Neighborhoods to come out and be a part of that as well.
I think that's an excellent idea, I'll forward that information immediately.
Very well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Mr. Thompson, I know, we have no public hearings today.
That's correct, Mr. Shine.
All right, thank you very much. Adding any legislation to the agenda?
We have two items, Mr. Shine.
Okay.
The first is an ordinance, amending the 2014 general fund budget. This is to provide peer awards for general fund classified employees. You'll notice on your agenda you have similar amendments for other employees, other classified employees, but this was inadvertently left off of the agenda. employees, but this was inadvertently left off of the agenda, even though it was prepared at the same time, and we would ask you to consider putting it on. The second is Resolution Number 37. It's a resolution suspending the effects of certain provisions of Chapter 10 and Chapter 106 of the code to allow for liquor to be sold on the grounds of the Moose Lodge in conjunction with a fundraising efforts for the dates that are listed in the resolution. There was some discussion yesterday about whether the city could do this because of state law. Since that time, we received an opinion from Ms. Glass saying that the city does have the authority to do it, so this can be added to the agenda and adopted today.
Okay, because of state law, we have to open this up to the public to see if there's anyone in here that would like to speak for adding the new legislation to the agenda. If not, is there anyone in here who would like to speak against adding this new legislation to the agenda? If not, I'll accept a motion.
Move.
Been moved by Councilman Webb, seconded by Councilman Oliver Jenkins. All in favor, vote yes. Opposed, no. Legislation has been added to the agenda with a...
Mr. Sam Thompson.
With a six vote, one out of the chain. Okay, we have no public comments at this particular part of our agenda.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Do we have to have a unanimous body or unanimous members present in the chamber to add items to the agenda?
It's a unanimous vote of those present and voting.
Right.
Okay. I just wanted to know if Sam been out of room, made a difference, if it's being added or not.
Have you already voted?
Okay.
Yes, Sam.
We're good.
Sam, we appreciate you.
Yes, sir.
Returning confirmation of appointments. Mr. Mayor, I believe we have quite a few from the administration. The Environmental Board, Mr. Thompson, you want to...
From the Comprehensive Environmental Board of Appeals, Mr. Burns, Dos Jr., Mr. Lynn Irish, Mr. Robert Arnold Rains, and Mr. Howard Allen and Ms. Susan Stankey have been appointed by the mayor and can be confirmed by the council.
I'll take all those together. If I can get a motion.
Move for confirmation?
It's been moved by Councilman Sam Jenkins, seconded by Councilman Mike Carvin. Any questions or comments? If not, all in favor, vote yes. Opposed, no. Mr. Mayor, we thank you for that group of concerned...
Councilman Shine.
...and energetic citizens. Yes, ma'am.
Did we not pass public comments?
We did, but we have no public comments at this particular, for any legislation that's being passed. Did you have somebody?
Did you want to suspend the rules, Councilman?
I would like to do that at this time on behalf of the MLK CDC.
I was seconding that.
Thank you so kindly.
Okay, now, I would ask this, that we would keep this timely. It's been moved by Councilman McCullough, seconded by Councilman Jenkins, to suspend the rules. All in favor, vote yes. Opposed, no. Okay, the rules have been suspended. Let me say this, we would like to keep this timely. If it's a lot that you have to present, I would ask you to wait until we get to that part of the agenda. Who you have, Councilman McCullough?
Ms. Rogers.
Ms. Rogers, okay, please come forward.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Chairman Shine, Vice Chairman Jeff Everson, our City Councilwoman, Mrs. McCullough, and all the other council members here, our mayor, Honorable Cedric Glover, Mr. Dale Sibley, and staff. This afternoon, I come to present some information from our area, my organization that I am president of, Martin Luther King Community Development Corporation. History of our area is the MLK area, formerly known as Cooper Road, USA. It's the second largest predominantly black community in the United States. Used to be called Cooper Road, USA, and second only to Harlem in terms of numbers. But generally, we are fifth or sixth lowest in terms of crime within this city reported by the 13 districts from our Shreveport Police Department Community Liaison Officers. According to the city records, this area was annexed to the city in 1977, at least the majority of it. Since that time, the area appears to have been severely lacking in city services in terms of infrastructure, streets, and drainage inclusive. The MLK CDC files reported a letter sent to the previous director of Public Works, Mr. Mike Strong, July 12th, on 2007. This event was lobbying for a new drainage system for University Park, which was built without a complete drainage system. I've been mandated by my board and members, some of whom are present today, to address the City Council about the streets and drainage issues in that area. I've spoken to Mr. Everson, and I will attend the meeting that he will set up for us later. However, I do have some slide shows just to show you some of the streets in our area. On the 2014 Capitol Improvements Budget, indicated are only two water main improvements as listed in District A. That's going to be Russell Road Water Main Improvements, index number 425108, and 12 Mile Bayou Pump Station Pumping Improvements, index number 45371. Other information from Mr. Stan Harris, who is now the current Director of Public Works, he indicated to me that the new budget will have approximately $6 million in new funding, and that the primary streets that have been in question for many years in our area, David Rains, Russell Road, and Audger Lane, are not actually on this list. Maybe they can be added because he says there are the asphalt overlays totaling $750,000 for the entire city. I'm here to admonish you to please consider our area. I was last here, I will show some of the streets as I speak. The first street was Linear Street in front of Linear School, one of the schools in our area. I only have about 24, 25 slides, Mr. Shine, I'm trying to keep it short. This is Oak Forest leading out on Junkweer and Gardonia Streets to the Railroad Company, KCS, in our area. These streets are primarily in the Oak Forest subdivision. Those streets would consist of Victor, Hattie, Skelly, Lund, Rexdale, that's Miller Avenue right there. This is adjacent to the Southern University Shreveport Campus in our area. And if you see some of these streets, if you drive on these streets, these are the same streets that carry our children to schools, that carry our citizens to their businesses and their jobs and other recreational activities. The problem has been so many of our streets are not concrete. They are the asphalt coverage, and this has not been addressed for so many years since being annexed. So, now we have major problems in the area. That's what we're asking for. I do know there are a couple of other streets that were given in the interest of time. I won't name all of these because you already have them on the list for overlay, but they're only like two to three streets, and only one that's really been put up, and this came up a while back, which is Percy Wilson for concrete, and that's only for one portion, not that full street. So, this is a very serious problem in our area. I've been mandated by my board and my members to please bring this to your attention. I will attend whatever committee meetings you ask or send a representative. But for so many years, going back to 1977, having been paying taxes, where a large percentage of our area is homeownership. So, therefore, somebody's been paying taxes, but our streets are not being fixed. We do realize Russell Road, David Rains Road were made into concrete during the last 20 years. However, these are lacking now in infrastructure. There's a six-inch drop-off at David Rains Road, that's one of them right there, that's near Tulsa. That drop-off, as you see, has been overlaid with a little asphalt, but it's still a dip in the road. So, we're asking at this time for a fair share of repairing and improving our streets. Thank you for your time. Do you have any questions?
I'd like to, as your City Councilperson, first express my gratitude to you and as well as the members of your association for coming here today. Glad to have you here. One of the main reasons that we formed the Council on Neighborhoods was in order to get the communities within the various districts involved in civic affairs. Since I've been in office these past four years, and in visiting with the various communities as I have done, associations as I have done with Ms. Rogers, I have provided them, I have stayed on board with providing them, giving them updates on all issues which concern streets such as what's your name, and as a matter of fact, over five or 600 copies of the streets that need fixing in the MLK area has been issued throughout the district. And I'm almost certain Ms. Rogers should have one because I had one of her neighbors to deliver this list to them. There was over a $28 million need had we supported the mayor's initiative with the Fix-It program. But at the end of the day, it took four votes, and that was voted down. In the MLK area, we needed 20, and I heard your figures, Ms. Rogers, and those were small figures.
I know.
But the need alone, based on the mayor's Fix-It program, was 28 million, and that wasn't all of the streets. Those were the prioritized streets. But this council voted that down. It didn't happen. So, what did we have to do? We had to go with the little money in the bucket that we had to be distributed among the districts, which it's not enough, and it still remains not enough, my point. I appreciate, Ms. Rogers, real good soldier. I appreciate a lot of you that have come here today, good soldiers, long time, long term soldiers. But what you need to know, as your representative, the same complaints that Ms. Rogers has brought before this council today, administration has already presented it. Ms. Rogers already has a copy. There's five or 600 other copies floating around in the district. So, are we aware of the need, the monies that need to be done based on the need? We don't have $28 million based on the need in District A to fix the prioritized streets. Again, I appreciate, Ms. Rogers, for coming. I appreciate all of you all for coming. There have been concerns about sewage. Mustafa, for the past four years, I've been inquiring about monies for sewage, drainage. Because, yes, I am aware of the drainage problem. I have always been aware. There's no way that I couldn't be aware. Why? Because I was born and reared in the MLK area, and my vision is still pretty clear. So, my point is, I have always been aware of your needs and your concerns, Ms. Rogers, and again, I appreciate you for all of your efforts, but at the end of the day, we need four votes. And I just want you to know, I am aware of your needs. It's not all about just one street. If you looked in this same packet, you saw what streets were being addressed under the bond issue, you saw what streets were being addressed under the concrete program, asphalt. It's not all about one street. There are several streets, as your councilman, including the street that Ms. Rogers lives on, that I have requested to be done.
Ms. Rogers, I don't mean to bring this to an end.
Councilman Shine, if you would allow me to close out, tell me...
No, just hold it one minute, I'm gonna tell you.
No, you're not gonna break in on me, no. That is disrespectful, very disrespectful. At least you can ask.
Ms. Rogers.
You have not asked. You are cutting in on me. That is disrespectful. Ms. Rogers, thank you again for coming.
If you all don't have the information that you need, you can wait.
But I want it you all to know, the MLK Association, that your councilman is on top of her game.
Thank you for your time.
And again, thank you for coming.
I appreciate you coming down. If you didn't get all of the information that you need, we have a section at the end where if you want to, and if the people wish you want to, they can stay awhile and we'll give them the information. If there's any questions that you don't have...
Refer to your packet.
We'll be glad to answer them, and because he has Mr. Harris here who's over the area that you all are talking about, he'll be glad to come up and ask any questions you want to. Appreciate you coming down, all right.
And I want to express to Jeff, thank you, Jeff, for all that you do.
Wait, you're out of order now. You're out of order now, Councilwoman.
We both are.
Let's go to the Shreveport Municipal Fire and Civil Service Board. Ms. Rogers, don't leave right now. Okay, Mr. Thompson?
The mayor has appointed Mrs. Irma Rogers to the Shreveport Municipal Fire and Police Civil Service Board.
Move for confirmation?
Okay, it's been moved by Councilman Jenkins, seconded by Councilman Oliver Jenkins to confirm Ms. Irma Rogers. Any questions or comments?
I assume all of this is back at regular meetings?
It is, it is, it is. We, Ms. Rogers, we appreciate you serving on the board. Okay, all in favor, vote yes. Opposed, no. Ms. Rogers has been confirmed with the 7-0 vote.
We have two reappointments to the Historic Preservation Commission Board, Mr. Lane King and Mr. Billy Wayne.
Move.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilman Jeff Everson, seconded by...
I would make a slight correction, though, that's Ms. Lane King and Mr. Billy Wayne.
Thank you. My mistake.
Okay. It's been moved by Councilman Jeff, and second, that was second by...
Sam Jenkins.
Okay, by Councilman Sam Jenkins. Any comments? If not, all in favor, vote yes. Opposed, no. Mr. Mayor, do you have either one of them here? I think they are continued...
Reappointments, yes.
Reappointments. Okay, thank you very much. Let's move on.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I want to thank all of those folks who, I know Irma Rogers is here, I think all of those folks who have offered to serve for doing so, I want to thank the council for your confirmation. I also want to express for those who are here who want to make comments regarding the condition of the streets in the city of Shreveport, that if you would, please exercise some patience and be prepared to speak at the appropriate time on the agenda today. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And we appreciate you all coming down, but we kind of have an order that we go by, and if we start doing this, then we just have to do this meeting after meeting after meeting. So, you know, we don't mind here interviewing all as soon as we get to public comments that would be dealing with that. Again, thank you all for coming down. Okay...
Thank you, again.
Mr. Thompson?
We have no items under 8A, but under 8B, we have several. The first, number 34, it authorizes 5939 Bunker Road to connect to the water and sewer system.
Move.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilman Webb, seconded by Councilman Jenkins. Any comments or questions? If not, all in favor, vote yes. Opposed, no. This piece of legislation passes with the 7-0 vote.
Number 35 authorizes 9776 Wallace Lake Road to connect to the water and sewer system.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilman Mike Carvin, seconded by Councilman Sam Jenkins.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any questions or comments? If not, all in favor, vote yes. Opposed, no. This piece of legislation passes with a 7-0 vote.
Number 36 authorizes Prowenitz Development Company, LLC, to connect to Lot Block B, Unit 1, Prowenitz Commercial Area to the water and sewer system of the city.
Move.
It's been moved by Councilman Mike Carvin, seconded by Councilman Sam Jenkins. Any comments or questions? If not, all in favor, vote yes. Opposed, no. This piece of legislation passes with the 7-0 vote.
Ms. McCullough and Mr. Oliver Jenkins?
Okay, it passes with the 7-0 vote.
There are no ordinances under Section 8. We're now into Section 9, regular agenda legislation. 9A, the first is 27. It adopts the System Survey and Compliance Questionnaire required by the Legislative Auditor's Office.
Move.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilman Sam Jenkins, seconded by Councilman Oliver Jenkins. Wow. Any questions or comments?
I'm sure the chairman has reviewed that document.
We're counting on that. Just want to make sure from the last three chairmen... Just want to make sure from the last three chairmen who read it in their time that you have done the same thing this time.
I'm sure he's done it.
Yes, well, thank you. All in favor, vote yes, opposed is no. Legislation passes with a 7-0 vote.
Number 28 authorizes execution of an amendment to the agreement to manage and operate Cyport Discovery Center.
It's been moved by Councilman Jeff Everson, seconded by Councilman Mike Carvin. Any questions or discussion? If not, all in favor, vote yes, opposed is no. This piece of legislation passes with a 7-0 vote.
Number 29 authorizes use of certain equipment by Sports Spectrum Race Management and River Cities Triathlon. And otherwise provides with respect there too.
It's been moved by Councilman Mike Carvin, seconded by Councilman Oliver Jenkins. Any questions or discussion? If not, all in favor, vote yes, opposed is no. This piece of legislation passes with the 7-0 vote.
Number 31 suspends certain provisions of Chapter 10 relative to alcoholic beverages on May the 10th concerning the dispensing sale and our consumption of alcoholic beverages in downtown Shreveport and the 600 and 700 blocks of Texas Street for backlot. This is a Robinson Fim Center production.
It's been moved by Councilman Jeff Everson, seconded by Councilman Mike Carvin. We give it to Sam. Sam, this is yours.
I'll take it.
Any questions and discussion? If not, all in favor, vote yes, opposed is no. This piece of legislation passes with a 7-0 vote.
Number 32 allocates funds to a specific not-for-profit organization from funds budgeted in quote "other charges" end quote in the Rivers Run Development Special Revenue Fund. This is for united citizens and neighborhoods.
It's been moved by Councilman Jeff, seconded by Councilman Mike Carvin. All in favor, vote yes, opposed is no. This piece of legislation passes with a 7-0 vote.
Mr. Webb, please.
There you go. I knew I predicted right.
Number 33 authorizes the city of Shreveport to seek proposals for the purchase, remarketing, extension, and/or refunding of the remaining principal balances of, number one, Louisiana Local Government Environmental Facilities and Community Development Authority Revenue Refunding Bonds for the Shreveport Convention Center Hotel Project Series 2008. And, number two, the Louisiana Local Government Environmental Facilities and Community Development Authority Revenue Bonds for the Shreveport Utility System Project Series 2005, and provides for other matters with respect there too. There is one amendment. Would you like for me to read the amendment, Mr. Chairman?
Please.
This amendment would remove the words, quote, "are any other officers of the city designated by the mayor collectively the designated officers," and adds the CAO to the persons who can take on this task.
I need an explanation on that amendment.
Could you, Mr. Thompson, or would you like for the city attorney?
I thought it was too broad, the idea of what was being offered in that proposal. So I wanted to narrow it down to specific people on the city's payroll.
Okay, all right. What's the pleasure, folks?
I'd certainly move on the amendment.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilman Oliver Jenkins on the amendment. Can I get a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we've gotten a second from Councilman Mike Carvin. Any questions or discussion now at this particular point?
Yes, I'm still trying to get a, show me again, where exactly. Hold on, I think I'm looking at the amendment.
In Section 2, in Section 1 and Section 2, it's.
Down below, Section 1.
Section 1, Section 2, it identifies who's supposed to be seeking proposals and who is, shall analyze those proposals. I mean, it's not necessarily substantive in nature, but because of some previous discussions about financial advisors, I wanted to make it clear on what I was supporting in this regard.
Let me say it again, Councilman.
There's a fairly broad description of who is a designee of the city of Shreveport. And I wanted to narrow that down so that we weren't out of compliance with other parts of legislation that we've already passed.
That's a great idea.
I don't, I'm not saying there was subterfuge intended. I'm just saying that was just to clarify that.
And I'm certainly not suggesting that there is any kind of subterfuge or any kind of sinister motive here. I'm just, I just want to make sure we got enough latitude for this legislation to move forward. And your concern is that the definition of a designated city is too broad and you want to narrow it just to the CAO?
No, to the CAO, the Assistant CAO, somebody that works in the finance department.
Or bond counsel.
Or bond counsel. Which is the way it was initially written. I guess nobody read it before.
Well, who else would be a designated city beyond those persons as it relates to this legislation? I guess that's what I'm trying to find out. Who else would fit that definition of being a designated city? I know the chief administrative officer certainly needs to be involved as well as the assistant chief administrative officer, but who else would be a designated of the city that would be involved in a.
You would have the finance director.
I mean, beyond those names. I guess what I'm saying, beyond the bond counsel.
Conceivably, you could have a financial advisor that, obviously, there's some issue on dispute, that is a designated, that could be designated. Or that was my concern. I'm not saying that was what was intended, but to preclude that, I just wanted to make it more specific.
Does the administration find anything troubling with this amendment?
Of course, Mr. Jenkins. It is another effort, unfortunately, a long line of actions taken by Mr. Oliver Jenkins in particular and the council in general to overstep, overreach, and position itself in a capacity that we believe is absolutely contrary to what is the appropriate role for the legislative branch of government. As we have said on numerous times before, this would be the same as the administration interjecting itself into the council selection of its clerk, of its council analyst, of its deputy clerk, of its internal auditor, or any group of investigators it might seek to bring in based upon its charter given authority to conduct external investigations. But, you know, we know that this is something that, obviously, this council is bent on. And we find it extremely problematic, not just because of what it does in terms of our current of the circumstances. It's essentially delayed us from being able to go out and address any number of problems involving the city's infrastructure for at least the past year plus and a half. But more important than that, we believe it establishes some precedents that ultimately end up diminishing, not just this administration, but the office of the mayor of the city of Shreveport, one that someone else will hold in about another 12 months or so. So again, we understand the desire, the intent, the focus, the motivation. We simply believe that it's unfortunate. We also probably feel just as equally well that Mr. Jenkins has his at least four, if not seven, votes lined up to go forward. And if the council so chooses to pass, we will acknowledge, but we do not support, we do not believe it's appropriate. We think it is not just out of line, it's completely out of line.
The present financial advisor has not been cleared to do work for the city of Shreveport until that matter has been resolved, that being.
And it's not a part of this legislation.
Right, so, I mean, I guess what I'm trying to say is.
And would consequently make the amendment completely unnecessary. But again, in an effort at absolute redundancy, because how someone who is not an employee or an officer of the city of Shreveport could be designated as such is beyond our understanding. But obviously, again, you know, this is an area of pursuit that Mr. Jenkins enjoys pursuing, believes is important, and we respect his right to do so. We just simply disagree.
I feel like, you know, this legislation, it needs to move forward for a lot of reasons. If it's my understanding, and if I'm wrong, somebody straighten me out, I don't think the present financial advisor can do work for the city of Shreveport and tell the financial issues involved that has been resolved. So I don't think that that comes into play. And I don't want this legislation so restricted until another person may have the same qualifications that may need to be brought on board to give some advice on this is prohibited from doing so under the language of this particular, this particular act that we have passed. And I'm ramming a little bit, but I'm just simply trying to say, if our concern is that the present financial advisor does not do any work, he cannot do any work. I think I've gone record agreeing with that, that that's an issue that's got to be worked out there. My last vote on this was because I felt like he needed to work his issue out like anyone else would have to work theirs out if they owed the city some money. He can't do work for the city of Shreveport and owe the city money. Until that's done, he cannot do work for the city of Shreveport. But I do not want this legislation so restricted until the mayor's office cannot have the option of bringing someone else in. And this is some very important legislation we have here, bringing someone else in with the qualifications to assist in moving forward with what we're trying to do, which is this refinancing and remarketing of our convention center and our hotel. It seems to me that if that's the worry, we don't need an amendment to address it. He can't, he can't work for the city of Shreveport right now. Let's don't put ourselves, let's don't throw out the proverbial baby with the bathwater and try and move forward, trying to get the refinancing done. That's what I'm saying.
Well, Mr. Jenkins, I don't perceive this as being so restrictive until we cannot move forward. It just so happens that it seems like maybe Councilman Oliver Jenkins, and I know I'm one that would have to disagree, that I don't see why this amendment would be so restrictive until we could not be able to move forward to take care of business.
I am concerned about these transactions going forward, Mr. Chairman, without the input of a financial advisor. Now, this is some important stuff we're dealing with here. I think the option of bringing someone in other than the present financial advisor, given what's going on, needs to be on the table. This does not need to come down to being a scenario where it's going in piecemeal fashion. I listened to the comments that were said yesterday by the CAO, which I do understand what is being said. We need to start moving forward. We may get to some point where we need a financial advisor. Let's get the people involved in this transaction that need to be involved in this transaction. It can't be the president one because of the financial issues that he needs to resolve. Now, if somebody doesn't get it resolved, we need to talk about it, you know? Without it now, I don't think we have to have any fear, have to be concerned that he needs to be involved in any of this.
I don't, maybe I'm perceiving or interpreting legislation wrong. I don't think this legislation would keep us from actually looking at a financial advisor. And if I'm not mistaken, I believe you and Councilman Oliver Jenkins has, I think you ought to have discussed with the administration about a new financial advisor, because I believe at this point, no decision was reached. I believe the decision that was reached was, you know, we want to go with the old financial advisor because of X, Y, and Z.
Well, I'm just listening to the comments that's been made. I'm saying it seems like the author is saying that he was concerned that maybe a designated of the city may be a present financial advisor. I understand that, agree that that should not be the case until that matter has been resolved.
But now, that could be a logical concern for him, and it could be a logical concern for me.
That's true.
And it could be a logical concern for other members of the council. Now, it might not be a logical concern for you.
Let me see this.
But, hold, let me finish. Now, you just got through taking about 10 or 15 minutes.
You kidding me?
No, I've been looking at you with my watch.
Go ahead, Mr. Chair.
At least 10.
Go ahead, Mr. Chair.
Well, I just so happen to be sitting in the chair seat, so.
I got eyes.
I think that, I think there might be someone on the council who might not have the same logical idea, logical thinking that you do. Now, let's beat this horse for a little while longer and then I'm gonna call for the vote.
Yes, sir.
You know, and that's how we sell this.
And that's fine. I'm just simply saying, and I agree with what you're saying, everybody up here has a right to their own opinion.
Right.
I'm just simply saying, I think that really restricts the legislation in a way where if we're saying we want a different financial advisor coming in, I don't see it happening with this particular legislation, because you have said the only people that could be involved in this transaction are ones you designate. There's no latitude there to bring in another designated, which could be a financial advisor to assist with this transaction. And I, my concern is for the city of Shreveport and the, and I know all of our concerns with the city of Shreveport. It's not a personal opinion. I'm just simply saying, I think this is something very important. There's a short timetable to get this done in the next few months. I'm certainly concerned, when I saw it without the amendment, I was concerned that we'd be moving forward without, you know, the input of a financial advisor. This makes it even more concerning, but, you know, that's my, that's my concern about the whole thing. We need to, it's a little restrictive.
Okay, Councilman Oliver Jenkins?
See, you know, we had some interpretation that a financial advisor could be a designated. And I'm not, and I'm not sure he can or can't be. And it sounded like the mayor said that was not the intent of the legislation by keeping it that broad. And if that was not the intent, then I guess my concerns are alleviated. Now, I'm a little bit, you've countered that by saying, well, we, it should include the financial advisor, so I don't think that's really fixing my problem to begin with.
Right.
So.
Well, let me be sure, be clear on what I'm saying now. I've seen if you've got some language in there that provides for a designated, and it becomes a matter of having to get a financial advisor to be involved, it can't be the present one. I think we all are saying it can't be the present one because of the financial issue that's there with the present financial advisor. It would have to be someone different. I'm all for that because of what's going on with the present financial advisor. Right, I'm all for that. And I think I've agreed with that and went on record for that. Out of the best interest for the city of Shreveport, that we tried to make sure this transaction goes through with the best advice possible. When you say these are the only people that can be involved in it, I just got a feeling we come back another day and have to deal with this issue of a financial advisor. Why not have the door open for that person to be involved at the appropriate time? We're not down here every day dealing with it like those guys or they are. So we just need to have a little latitude to do it and just simply say, the present financial advisor can't be involved until the transaction that that present financial advisor is involved with is worked out. Then it's a matter of talking about what needs to be done.
All right, I'm gonna call for the.
Mr. Chairman, I was supposed to speak 15 minutes ago.
So what Oliver is saying is that this amendment will exclude the personal record as our financial advisor from being involved with this.
And any other person given this language that may fit the definition of a financial advisor. He's naming only people that can be involved in the transaction.
Okay, if we, if we don't vote for the amendment, then what's stopping him from being involved?
Nothing.
We are disagreeing on the interpretation. And I think that's a very, the whole discussion's very valid, because there's a lot of different angles on how to approach this. And that was not the intent of how we started.
Can I, can I answer that, Mr. Webb?
Hold up one minute. If you don't mind, Ms. McCullough says she pointed out what you said 15 minutes ago, and, you know, and, you know, I want it at least seem to be fair, you know? Doesn't matter what you do, some folks will always say that you're not fair. So, Councilman Jenkins, since you've had about five or six bites at the hour, but we're gonna come back to you.
I understand.
Yeah.
So how many bites will I get, Councilman Shine?
One, that's right.
Okay, it's my understanding, I mean, I heard, I heard Oliver say, one of the options was a CAO, a CEO, or the bond counsel. I mean, it's not the bond counsel made up of a financial advisor as well. It's not, well, it's my understanding that there is a team which is involved with the bond projects, which involves the financial advisor. with the bond projects, which involves the financial advisor. And so, I wanted some clarity on the bond council versus the, the bond team, which involves or includes the financial advisor. Let me finish. Because as I understand that your financial advisor and what the public needs to know is your quarterback. I mean, that's the understanding that I have, you know, on a football game, you got a quarterback. You can't have a game unless you have a quarterback. And based on the actions of this council, you know, by a four-three or four-two vote, no, six-one vote, I'm sorry, with me voting in opposition, uh, the financial advisor has been fired, which means a lot of Ron Robinson, Arm, a lot of the projects that we have listed can't move forward because as a part of the bond team, as I understand it, you have a financial advisor. So, we fired the financial advisor. I heard somebody say, well, I heard Sam say, well, we don't need to, uh, well, you know, since we don't have him anymore, you know, we need to look at getting someone else. But who designate, designate? Your mayor. Cedric is, Cedric leaves in 2014, your next mayor comes, he no, he no longer designates. Whether it's gonna be black, white, green, or yellow, are you taking away the authority of that official coming into the office? My concern is if you don't have your quarterback, why would you try to play the game?
I'm not sure.
And that's where I am, Oliver. I understand that, you know, ordinances change, you know, but your financial advisor is your key person, you know? And why are we trying to go around excluding which, and I know, again, there's change, why would we exclude the function of the operation of one office, which is your, you know, your, your mayor designate your financial advisor? We fired him, now you're holding up the projects. People are really looking at us crazy now, Arm, you know, streets, drainage, because it, you know, nothing can move forward unless you have your financial advisor. Again, the vote went six-one. So, you know, I don't, I don't understand what we're trying to do here. It, it doesn't make sense. You know, my thing, and what I suggested, Councilwoman Shine, and I'm about to finish because you said I only had one bite at the apple.
Right.
Why can't we consider if he's willing to bring back the financial advisor that, that we've fired and allow him to proceed, proceed with his job? Because you're saying that he owes the city money, which in good faith, he put in a special set aside fund to say, look, if I owe this, here it is. And yet, you want to say, well, because he owe it, he can't work for us. That's crap. You know, that needs to stop. And that's what you all, see, that's why, uh, Ms. Rogers and the rest of the MLK Association family, that's why I said, come down here. It's important, I appreciate Ms. Rogers and Ron Robinson and Dawn Robinson and my friend on Addison Street. Come down here so you can see what's going on. Because a lot of what I'm sharing now, you didn't even know anything about it. We're sitting up here talking about a financial advisor, and you don't know that the authority of the mayor has been taken away to even designate a financial advisor to move forward on anything. And that's what you need to know.
Uh...
Thank you, Chairperson.
I'm gonna bring this discussion back to council members. Ms. Rogers, we, we appreciate you all coming down, but I'm gonna bring this discussion back to the council where it should be. Now, Councilman Sam Jenkins, I'm, I'm going to you again.
Right.
And, uh, please, uh, start the clock and then we're gonna, you know...
Clock on a council member?
That's, that's correct.
All right. Well, let me see, that's kind of unusual, but I would say this.
No, it's not unusual.
Let me ask a question.
Check your rules.
You got the chair.
You got 10 minutes.
You got the chair.
And it, and then it passes on.
This is what I'm asking.
We don't have filibustering down.
Well, let me ask this. If this legislation moved forward with the designated people that are in here, and it got to a point where we needed a, a financial advisor to get involved, is that something that could come, is that something that could come back to the council?
Sure. Mm-hmm. Would have to.
That, that would have to come back to the council?
It would have to.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
Just amended.
Well, 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 I'm not understanding then. If, if indeed a financial advisor getting involved, whether the language is designated or whether the language is only these particular people, we're gonna be involved in that decision to have a financial advisor aboard, right?
Mm-hmm.
So, what is, so what is the reason for not just going with the original legislation the way it is? What would be the reason to change it then? If that, if the financial advisor only gonna get involved by coming back before the council, we have something to say about it, if that's what the concern is.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, would you explain to me, I'll get to you in one minute, Mr. Mayor, unless you want to, uh, that the bonds, I mean, in order to sell the bonds, you're gonna need a financial advisor.
Mr. Chairman. Uh, Councilman Sam Jenkins did simply take something that's already wrong and makes it even more wrong. That's about it. As I said to you all earlier, there are rights and privileges that are vested within the legislative branch that are due to operate separate and independent of the administrative branch. The appointment of your staff, selection of the external auditor, the selection of external investigations and investigators, all of those are things that are the province of the legislative branch. These are things that are the province of the administrative branch that ultimately have to come back to this council for legislative approval and authorization in order to ultimately move forward. And so, what you have here is, again, rather than focusing on the, the needs, the priorities, the challenges of this city, it, it is, again, focusing on an issue that has been, I can't state it any better than what Councilwoman McCullough has, that's been effectively dealt with. That effort at compromise has been attempted time and time again, but, you know, I, I guess if you sit in a place and a position that's as comfortable as Mr. Oliver Jenkins, then it's possible to engage in this sort of stuff. But for the vast majority of the people of this city who live in places, who live in neighborhoods, that have real needs, that have real challenges, who are looking for their leaders to address their issues and challenges, it represents yet again, uh, another obstacle, another delay, and something that is completely inappropriate and unnecessary. Uh, and more so than that, it also, again, diminishes the vested power and authority that rests not with Cedric Glover, but within the office that I'm privileged to hold. And, again, unfortunate, this is our attempt, Mr. Jenkins, to try and navigate our way around as best we can what has been placed with us, but no attempt at an end run to, uh, hire or bring on board, uh, anyone or anything that this council has already, again, inappropriately expressed its position on. But this is our effort to ensure that we can at least continue to advance these processes forward while we hope at some point we'll be able to come to a meeting of the minds with this council and be able to ultimately move forward. But it was two years ago that Ms. Irma Rogers was here, speaking in support of Fix Shreveport Streets Act, uh, as Councilwoman McCullough referenced. An effort that came up not just once, but three times. And each of those times, it got two votes. There are projects that over 60% of the citizens of this city voted on, uh, in April of 2011, almost three years ago. Many of those projects have been engineered, they've been designed, they are simply awaiting construction dollars to go forward. Their streets, their drainage, their water, their sewer, their parks and recreation projects, things that will improve the quality of life for people in neighborhoods where they live and will also put people to work that have been blocked because, again, uh, the confident and the comfortable managed to be able to count the four in this council and they stand still.
Uh, let me, let me, let me, let me say this, let me say this. It seems like we're getting a little personal here, and I would hope that we would be too professional, uh, get to be personal. Uh, I, I just don't think it's good for us to refer to one another as being comfortable and being in comfortable, uh, situations or districts. I think all of us live in districts where we need some, some, uh, some capital projects done. And to me, this is not around, uh, who lives in a comfortable district, but it's around who will be next financial advisor be. Mr. Jenkins, I'm gonna give you one more shot at it and then I'm gonna call for, and then the other, and, and, and I hope that we would keep this on a professional basis and let's don't, you know, let's, let's don't pinpoint, uh, at an individual.
As you know, Councilman Shine, that is not my style.
That's right. Now, that's not your style.
And I will tell you that, uh, I'm glad to hear the mayor comments, the mayor's comments in regard to what that intent is, and, uh, I'm happy to withdraw that particular amendment. With that being said, for the record...
Stop it.
And that, that's, that's my motion. I would like to add one other thing that I think really deserves, you know, clear, public dialogue ultimately, is that I am in support of a financial advisor. I just think as a duty of a city councilman, part of my job is to look out for the financial well-being of this city and where we spend that money.
Right.
And, uh, I don't think that's a great, we, that relationship, though he has done valuable service for the city, we are obviously in an impasse, and I would love to see, as we have all proposed in previous resolutions, of finding a new financial advisor, and I stand firm on that.
I agree.
I think we have the uniat, near unanimous support of the council, maybe the unanimous support of the council to seek out a new financial advisor. So, that's my focus, my intent of this proposed amendment with the clarification that the mayor has made. More than said, I, it was not to stir up the pot on this issue again. I assure you, that was not my, my reason for putting this forward, and, you know, sadly, I probably should have made a few more overtures to some of the councilmen beforehand to make that clear, but at any rate, I'm withdrawing it with your second.
I second it.
Let's move forward on, uh, I'd like to make a motion on the original legislation.
Okay.
Do we have a vote on the...
Mr. Chairman.
He can just withdraw it.
Oh.
So, there's no need to, uh, vote on that.
Okay. It's on the original.
This is on the original without the amendment.
Okay.
To adopt ordinance number 33.
It's been moved by Councilman Oliver Jenkins, seconded by Councilman Sam Jenkins. All right? Uh, we've had so much talk on it, so I'm gonna ask for the vote. All in favor, vote yes, opposed, is no. Uh, this piece of legislation passes with a six vote and one against. Councilwoman McCullough in District A voted against this particular piece of legislation.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Uh, the council can now consider resolution number 37. It was the one that was added. If, if the chair wants me to, I can read that resolution.
Please, Mr. Thompson.
It's a resolution suspending the effect of certain provisions of Chapter 10 and Chapter 106 of the Code on Saturday, April the 5th, uh, Saturday, April the 26th, Saturday, May the 17th, Saturday, August the 2nd, and Saturday, August the 23rd, all in 2014, in connection with fundraising efforts by the Shreveport Moose Lodge, number 2239.
Number 2.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilman Ron Webb, seconded by Councilman Oliver Jenkins. Uh, all in favor, vote yes, opposed, is no. This piece of legislation passes with a six-o vote, one out of the chamber.
Mr. Chairman, there are no, um, we're not in the introduction of resolutions, there are no resolutions to be introduced that are on the agenda. We're under introduction of ordinances. Uh, the first is number 13. It amends Section 34-30 of the Code of Ordinances relative to areas of special flood hazard and otherwise providing with respect thereto. Number 14 amends a 2014 capital improvements budget. Uh, this concerning, concerns the Stoner Avenue Dog Park. Number 15 amends a 2014 capital improvements budget. Uh, this concerns the LSU Health Science and Escape Project. Uh, number 16 amends a 2014 capital improvements budget. This is for HVAC at the airport. Number 17 amends a 2014 airports enterprise fund budget. Uh, that's the companion. Number 18 amends a 2014 general fund budget. Uh, number 19 amends the 2014 water and sewer fund budget. Number 20 amends a 2014 community development special revenue fund budget. These last two have been concerning the pay awards for the classified employees. Number 21 amends a 2014 airport enterprise fund budget, this pay awards for classified employees. Number 22 amends a 2014 golf enterprise fund budget, pay awards. And number 23 declares the city's interest in certain vacant lots as surplus. And number 24, which was an add-on, amends a 2014 general fund budget concerning pay awards for classified employees.
What a pleasure.
Some of those were in the direction.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilman, uh, Oliver Jenkins, seconded by Councilman Jeff Emerson, that, uh, legislation would be introduced. It will lay off for two weeks, in two weeks, and may or may not be active upon.
Mr. Webb, uh, there was some discussion yesterday. Do you want to, uh, table number 19, 20, 21, 22, and 24 concerning the pay awards? Or do you want to leave it on the agenda?
Let's, let's table.
All right, let's, 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 let's move to introduce, and then we will table them after we vote to introduce this.
Oh, you mean, we do that?
I thought they were already introduced.
I think we just introduced them.
I'm still waiting for Mr. Shine to vote, so I'm sorry.
Yeah, we, right, right. We, we never, I never called for the vote. Now, maybe we had some folks who was very active and went on and voted, so that's, that's fine.
Yeah.
Okay. So, the legislation has been introduced. Okay, now, you want to table...
Yes.
Second. 19, 20, 21, 22, and 24.
Okay, it's been moved to table, uh, the following. All in favor, vote yes, opposed, is no. Those pieces of legislation has been tabled.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
Who made the motion and who did the second? Mr. Webb motioned?
I did second.
Okay, thank you.
The Honorable Samuel Jenkins.
Thank you, sir. I'm talking about my former name.
Yeah.
And, uh, Mr. Sibley. With regard to 23, there was a request for a map. Obviously, doesn't need to be this week, but if we can put that on there at least for the next week or sometime before, just to see, because we were trying to figure out which plot it was and it wasn't particularly clear. And so, you know, not a requirement at this point, just keep it on our list for next week.
We, we, we staff actually have those and we'll, you have, you have individual copies? Bonnie has individual copies today for you. Again, you won't need them, uh, until the, can't be voted on until the 25th, but Bonnie's delivering copies now as requested.
24 to 25?
I'm sorry? Can't come up for final passage until the 25th.
Okay.
Has to be advertised, I think, at least.
Thirty times.
Has to advertise the requirement for three times because it deals with property.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, uh, Mr. Thompson, let's move on, please.
Uh, we're now on ordinances and second reading and final passage. The first is number eight. It amends a 2014 capital improvements budget. Uh, there is one amendment, uh, to esp, to establish appropriate funds for two airport projects, security renovation phase two, uh, and, um... Runway? Runway?
Come on.
Second.
Okay.
We're moving on the amendment?
On the amendment.
Okay.
Okay.
Been moved by Councilman, uh, Sam Jenkins, seconded by Councilman Jeff Emerson.
They didn't look that way on our agenda.
I think we got, there's a little confusion because yesterday, I don't remember the amendment.
There it is, there it is. It's up in the timeline.
Are we ready to vote? Are we still have some questions?
We do have a question. Is there an amendment for this, anybody from the airport?
Brian.
Brian?
It looks like an amendment on it, yeah.
There is an amendment, Mr. Uh, Mr. Thompson.
I may have missed it yesterday.
That Mr. Francis.
State funding.
Just you pays for it.
Yeah.
Just taking a grant.
Oh, number eight, is that amendment to number eight?
We submitted, uh, an amendment, I believe, to, to add projects to...
I have it. Julie, Julie, would you read it, number one?
It looks like an additional 150,000.
The explanation is, um, this ordinance updates the airport master plan for downtown airport that was completed in 2004. The revision will develop a capital improvement plan for the next 10 years. Funding for this project will be 150,000 and will be 100% funded by the Louisiana Department of Transportation.
All right, so move on amendment.
Hold my second.
State, state money.
Okay, all in favor, vote yes, opposed, is no.
We love it's been state money.
Exactly.
Chairman, we need a motion on the...
So move on the...
On the, right.
Legislation as amended.
Right, as amended, okay. Been moved by Councilman Sam Jenkins, seconded by Councilman Mike Carvin, on the legislation as amended. All in favor, vote yes; opposed, is no. Legislation as amended passes with a seven oh vote.
Number nine, amends the 2014 capital improvements budget. This concerns Fern Avenue and Seventh Street.
So move.
Been moved by Councilman Oliver Jenkins, seconded by Councilman Jeff Everson. Any questions or discussion?
I'll just briefly remind everyone that the Infrastructure Committee did recommend passing.
All right, good.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Member of the council, just so he can introduce himself and be able to turn in his travel voucher by saying he actually engaged in some activity, want to introduce to you all Mr. Reed King, or Jeff Reed, brother, with Reed King. He was a part of the development team. You met his associate on yesterday, and this is the individual that we had to interview to connect with last year at the International Council of Shopping Centers in Las Vegas.
This was a, this was a great man that you came back talking so highly about?
Without question, Mr. Shine.
All right. Mr. Mayor, you made, I mean, you must have really made an impression on this gentleman.
Well, I think, I think, I think, I think better yet, Shreveport made an impression.
Well, I mean...
And he was able to...
But you're the face, you know, when you go out, now you the face of Shreveport. That's why I always tell you to shave, you know, put your towel on and, you know, project a good image. So evidently, he projected a good image to you. We're so glad to have you.
Thank you. Well, there was about fifty thousand people at that convention, and he was, he cast a shadow walking up and down there. We all knew, we knew he was there, okay?
That I can believe. That I can believe. When you're two hundred, when you're, when you're six-five and you're two hundred and fifty pounds, you have a tendency to do that. Did I get the weight right? I was wondering if you was gonna catch that and tell me, thank you, okay?
I wanna, I wanna thank y'all for, for supporting us on this. It's been a journey for us. The mayor and his staff has done a great job promoting Shreveport, and Whole Foods has looked at this market for quite some time, and the message just wasn't out there what Shreveport was. And for me, it was, it was close to home, because my mom's from, been in Louisiana.
Wow, all right.
My family's from Ruston, and so...
Oh, Ruston, huh?
We're from part of, we're the Woodard clan up there, and so my aunt lives here, my cousin lives here, and I spent every year coming back and forth to Shreveport. And to come in here and be part of this team and this community with the quality development, we're really, really enthused. And I want to tell you, Whole Foods did not understand what Shreveport was. And once they got the message and understood the quality of this community and how they work together and the can-do attitude of this community, it was a compelling story. And, you know, to get our project off the ground, we really needed, we needed support from our existing landowners, the Querby family, adjacent landowners, from the DOTD, and from city council. And everybody just jumped on board. It was a collaborative effort, and we're real proud to be here, and we hope that we can deliver very quality, first-class retail development for y'all. So, thank you for supporting us, appreciate it.
Is that Woodard Walker?
What's that?
Is that Woodard Walker?
No, that's the, that's the wealthy side of the family, we're the other side. Yeah.
We should point out, Community Bank obviously deserves some credit, because they did physically have to adjust their own layout themselves. So they are a great supporter in this.
They absolutely did. They, they were willing to close off access into their bank and tie into this shopping center to create the access for the project. And Larry Little and his group over there, Matt Forsyth, were very, very supportive of this. And once they got the vision, they jumped on board. And Sports Spectrum was as well, Matt Brown.
I think, you know, also want to recognize the administration and the engineering department for putting focus on our master plan. We recently passed a new master plan for the city. And this particular, some of these enhancements are gonna really help that area with traffic flow, but also in illustrating some of the points of that plan. And so I think it's gonna add for the accessibility into your development, which I imagine is going to be very successful and popular. It already is a highly trafficked area. So I think some of these, these decisions are wise decisions to put in that general area. And, you know, I'm thankful that y'all came together to make some of these decisions, because they're, they're good ones. So we appreciate y'all working with us and bringing some good things to the area.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you for coming down.
Mr. Shine, I need your vote.
I was trying to wait until he got through. I didn't know whether he was gonna say something that way. Yeah, changed my vote or not, but he did, all right. Legislation passes with a seven oh vote, okay, Mr. Thompson?
Uh, number ten, Chapter seventy-four of the Code of Ordinances relative to solid waste. There was some discussion about postponing.
Yes, move to postpone, second.
Been moved postponed by Councilman Sam Jenkins, and we got two seconds to postpone. That's, so this is a piece of hot legislation by, uh...
Two members of the committee.
Yeah, two members of the committee, that's right. So this is hot. All in favor, vote yes; opposed, is no. This piece of legislation will be postponed.
Uh, number eleven declares the citizen intention to acquire full ownership of certain adjudicated properties for the Ned Better Heights Land Banking Project.
Been moved by Councilman Jeff Everson, seconded by Councilman Samuel Jenkins. All in favor, vote yes; opposed, is no. This piece of legislation passes with a seven oh vote, okay?
Number twelve changes the name of Stiefel Chase Plaza Drive to Gregory Kirby Plaza Drive. Mr. Chairman, there was some discussion about tabling this?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to table pending the ordinance that has to take place.
Been moved by Councilman Sam Jenkins, seconded by Councilwoman McCullough, did that?
That's incorrect.
I'll second it.
Okay. Well, we getting two seconds now, Oliver Jenkins and Jeff Everson, so, thank you very much.
Those are all of the items on the regular agenda, Mr. Chairman. I'm not aware of any item on the table, the agenda that needs to come off. The appeals were handled yesterday for the property standards and for alcoholic beverage, Chapter ten appeals. But we do have two appeals from the Metropolitan Planning Commission, C eighty-seven thirteen and C eighty-nine thirteen. And there was talk yesterday of postponing.
Yeah, that's what I was about to say. Mr. Thompson, the chair makes a motion to postpone. Can I get a second?
Second.
By Councilman Oliver Jenkins. We will postpone this legislation for two weeks, and at that time, I hope we will be in a position, Gene, to move on it. Thank you very much, Gene.
There are no other appeals.
Oliver Jenkins, please.
B, he was just waiting for you to remind him of it.
I wait for Joe to call seven oh before I press.
Oh, okay.
Make sure we're still on track.
All right, all right, Mr. Thompson?
There are no other appeals. We're now into reports from officers, boards, and committees.
Mr. Thompson, let's, uh, let's start with you. I wanna, I wanna reach out to, uh...
Mr. Shine, I know that you have a program to keep these meetings as short as possible. It's one of the interests of mine, I have no report.
Okay.
I've never seen anyone that could get out and give a report as gracious as Mr. Thompson.
Okay, any, any, any council member would...
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
I have two, actually. One, the newly formed Solid Waste Committee.
Right.
We are asking that anyone who takes their accounts from March the tenth at two P.M. That'll be immediately before our work session on Monday, March the tenth at two P.M. The council members will meet with the council staff, just kind of lay out some groundwork.
Let's wait till Jackie get back, so she can make sure she get that meeting date. Because we want you, we want your committee to be facilitating. Jackie, make sure you facilitate them with all of the information and whatever they need, yeah?
She always does a great job. March the tenth, two P.M., Solid Waste. This will be a meeting for the members of the committee with the council staff at this particular point. Just to lay out, just, just the council staff.
Don't want to say?
Not right now, Mr. C.A.L.
He's covering strategy, some kind of programming.
Let me scratch that note.
I'd like to bring my own attorney. It's those meetings, I like an attorney with me.
I'm a little lary when they leave you out.
We just want to get some groundwork, so we can, when we do get with that...
And yeah, Sam was...
You're not wasting their time.
They're not wasting their time, absolutely.
Okay, I understand completely. That's a good way to tell you, they don't want you in there.
So please check your counters for that one. Secondly, the Audit and Finance Committee, we met on yesterday at one thirty, and we reviewed recently released audit reports, including sport train, accuracy of water, sewer billings, disclosures for city appointed boards and commissions, and the Shreveport Home Mortgage Authority. It's our understanding out of these meetings that the administration is working to address many of the recommendations that were included in the audit reports, and to make the areas more efficient and improve the accuracy of information. I will say, we were very pleased with everything we heard in response to the audits at the committee meetings on yesterday. In addition, as it relates to the Shreveport Home Mortgage Authority, the audit identified two point six million dollars that can potentially be transferred, transferred to the city. The administration reported that they, they've had some communication with the Shreveport Home Mortgage Authority representatives to determine the process involved in obtaining the forms. During discussions, the committee requested that the administration keep the entire council, all members of the council. The rest of steps the administration is taking to determine if and when those forms will be made available to the city. And that's a report from your audit and finance committee, from yesterday.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
At this point, Mr. Mayor, I see two, a set of Robinson twins, and I remember when both of them had a full head of hair in my, in my seventh grade class at Linnia. And then when they got to Green Oaks, both of them had begun to put on a little weight there. But, you know, instead of y'all trying to stay like me, I see y'all trying to catch it with the man. Good to see y'all.
Brutal today.
I'm telling you. Okay, uh, Mr. Thompson, I believe we had, the council will resolve itself into a commit of the whole. And there's a motion, it's been moved by Councilman Michael Carvin, seconded by Councilman Sam Jenkins. All in favor, vote yes.
Can I get a hand vote, please?
Okay. Okay, now, can I get a motion for the approval of the minutes?
So move.
Been moved by Councilman Ron Webb, seconded by Councilman Sam Jenkins for the approval of the minutes. All in favor, vote yes.
Yes, hand in the air.
Okay, that's what, six, five, four, three, two, one. Okay, all, all right. Communications and council members, let me start with Councilwoman McCullough.
Yes, first of all, I want to thank MLK CDC for coming out today. It was good seeing you, always good to see you. And also, I wanted to share with the council that I had the opportunity, well, I'll wait until you guys finish.
Now, proceed now, because we go...
If you're gonna talk, I'll wait.
Now, now, look, you, look, you have the floor. Now, we're talking, now, now, we have something else over here. We're gonna, we're gonna move on to another council member.
And it's important that we remain respectful, Councilman Shine.
Do you want the floor, or do you want to...
If you're going to listen.
Look, no, no, the floor is yours. Now, you can't determine whether I'm gonna listen to you or not. Now, if you're gonna wait on that, we're gonna move on.
Are you finished?
No, are you ready or not?
I wanted to ask this council concerning Resolution thirty-three. Based on the legislation, it was a draft that was presented to me on yesterday. I had the understanding that, based on what I saw, and that's why I asked for some explanation, that the mayor would no longer designate, based on what was presented to me, your financial advisor. And of course, I wasn't so familiar with the amendment that we addressed today, which is pretty much in the same. So that was why, when we voted for the, you know, just the regular legislation, Resolution thirty-three, I voted no. But as I understand, that legislation does support the city of Shreveport moving forward to get a designate. And I do support that. That's why I so highly favored having a financial advisor in place. And I wanted to ask you, Sam, as a member of the Audit and Finance Committee, I brought it to your attention in our meeting this past week. Are we going to, or can you have it placed on the agenda so that we might address a financial advisor? I don't know, you know, that was a concern of this. Will we be addressing a financial advisor at our next meeting? Will we be communicating with the mayor as to whether or not he would be designating someone? But I think it's an issue such that it does need to come up on, in our next committee meeting. If that's possible.
And any member of the committee that wants to place someone on that agenda, we consider to do that.
Well, I'm, I'm interested to, to have something, some update or something regarding what we're gonna do as far as having the mayor to designate the financial advisor.
Well, I know we had some unfinished audits that we still need to review. We haven't come together on a date.
Okay.
Or time to do it. It could certainly be placed on the agenda, and the committee can deal with it as we see fit, you see?
Okay, and also, I had the opportunity to, I was the guest speaker this week at the Andrew Curry Park, I think it is, Mayor Glover Recreation Park. I got a chance to actually be the speaker, and I had the opportunity to speak to babies from three years old all the way up to fifteen. And my topic of discussion, what are your convictions? Do you have convictions? Are you man or woman enough to stand on your convictions, what you believe in? And I really enjoyed myself, I really appreciate the staff at Andrew Curry Park, Ms. Linda Smith, and some others. I can't recall their name, and it's because, you know, I just didn't write it down. But even our spa staff, they were present, and they provided dinner for the boys and girls, and they had a nice little program. And I really had a wonderful time, and I was presented this beautiful plaque. I'm sure you saw it on Facebook, Jeff Everson, because I immediately, as soon as I got home, Ronald, I put it on Facebook. But it was really a joy to share in the Allendale community, because most of the time I'm in, you know, in the Lakeside or MLK community. But it was really a pleasure to serve the Allendale community as well, and meet and greet with what I call my babies. Thank you so much, Councilman Shine.
You are quite welcome. Councilman Oliver Jenkins, did you want to follow, Councilwoman McCullough?
I didn't have anything at this point.
Okay, Councilman Sam Jenkins, did you...
I'm done for the day, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Can't believe it, but thank you. I'm just kidding, Sam. Okay, Mike?
I'm good.
All right.
Can I get permission to change my vote?
Uh...
You're not gonna ask me?
Yeah, I'm coming to you, Ron, I'm coming, you know, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna leave you out, Ron.
Councilman Shine, Ron has allowed me to do this. Do I have the, do I have the opportunity to change that vote for Resolution thirty-three based on misunderstanding of what the legislation said?
The procedure for that would be, as I, as I mentioned to you, and I think this probably needs to be done back when we go back into the regular meetings, so that it will be on the minutes of the record. You can say that you would like to change your vote, and if there are no objections to that, then the clerk can do it. If there's any objections, the formal procedure for doing it would be for someone on the prevailing side to ask for reconsideration, reconsideration of the vote, and then you could re-vote the way you want it to. If there's no objections, then it could be done that way.
Miss Scott, I just saw the old city, I think it was an old city attorney just walk in, and, uh...
Former city.
Former, not old.
Well, well, he'll tell you, when you've been down here as long as, you've been down here as long as the two of us, it's all right to say old, yeah. All right, good to see you here, okay. I think, uh, he was a city attorney when I, when I came on the council about eight years ago. Okay. If not, uh, I believe, Mr. Thompson, we are...
Still hasn't asked me if I had anything to say.
I thought I did.
No.
Ron, I'm sorry.
He took my place, and then you took over.
Oh, well, I'm, I'm sorry. Rose, you should have told me you was taking this place.
I was just wanting to ask the administration about Comcast, where we're at in our dialogue with them, and if we're getting any closer to...
We are, we've actually gotten, we're down to working on some draft agreements in order to try and, and start looking at terms of a franchise agreement very early in the process. I think we've done as much diligence as we can in terms of exploring and understanding what the laws are, what opportunities are out there, who else may be interested out there. But in any event, because it's a non-exclusive situation, we feel compelled to go ahead and go forward with them and try and get the best deal we can with them, as well as seek out any other opportunities that are out there. So we are in that process.
I'm not getting as many calls, but I know I am getting, people are coming up to me here and there and asking me about it, and I said, well, I hadn't heard anything, so I assume we're... I assume we're.
Well, and that's very important to us.
To resolve some of the issues, so.
We've gotten some feedback, you know, because they changed their key person here, and I think all of you have this information, and it's very important to us as we go through this, if there are still issues that we're not familiar with, that y'all keep us posted on it, so we try to maintain constant communication with them, and it's important for us to know whether or not they are in fact getting better in what they said they've been doing, so we appreciate that feedback from y'all.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Okay, with public comments, Mr. Maxey, would you come forward? We're so happy to see you come on down and express to us what you'd like to express to us. I know Mr. Sibley's glad to see you down, and I'm glad to have you come down.
Yeah, it's always.
Stick your name and address so they can have it for the record of that.
762 Austin Place. It's so.
I'm sorry, could you speak a little louder?
762 Austin Place, I'm sorry, Mr. Thompson.
And give him your first name again, too.
Jordan O'Maxey. It's always a pleasure to come and speak, and I just wanted to let you all know that I was back, and, and I'm glad to see, I don't know about anybody else, but I'm glad to see Ms. Rose McCullough still in the seat fighting, and the district looks good, I want to say that first off. And with the sewage and the drainage and the lines, we talked about this once before, we've gotta do something, y'all. If it's, you all are someone else, we've gotta do something. We need the sewage lines and the sewages, we, we need them. The streets, some of the schools I went to, graduated from, Green Oaks, Lanier, we need these streets. These are the streets that we travel down daily, once, probably some of you all, but we travel down daily. And I'm gonna say this for the last time, Brother Glover, it's always a pleasure to see you, and I hate that you be chipping golf balls, but you chip 'em and you chip 'em well. Thank y'all very much.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Maxey. We have a request here from Mr. William Avery. Where's William? William? All right. Is it anybody here from the police department, because I think what, what Mr. Avery is gonna be talking about.
Chief Waddleson is here, Mr. Chairman.
Where are you, chief?
The way to.
Chief, I'm sorry, you want to come up a little bit, right? So, Mr. Avery has a beautiful voice singing, but I don't know how loud he talks, you see?
Thank you. To the mayor, and to this council, to my favorite councilman, Mr. Shine.
Thank you.
I wanted to talk to the council, and, and to see if we can get something done about devastating, ear-piercing, nerve-wracking music, they call it music, up and down our Not one day, not one hour, not one half hour, I dare say hardly one quarter hour. You're not banging and bumping up and down our streets. I didn't give my address. I live at 4958 McDaniel Drive. They not look like it, but I've been there 35 years. Thank God, I've been retired 12 years. I just see a lot of stuff going on up and down my streets that doesn't please me at I walk the street almost daily, especially on Fridays, to retrieve all this stuff that everybody else don't want, and just throw it in the street, and I picked it up. Have a stop sign, two doors from my house, this stop sign is run daily, speeding and racing right through that stop sign, like, like they've lost their mind. It sounds a lot of times like they're competing with this noise. One wants to be louder than the other. Ninety-nine percent of these people, like I say, I've been where I live 35 years, I know just about everybody that live on my street, not personally, but I know them. These people that race up and down these streets, they don't live on my street. Apparently, they can't make all this noise on the street that they live on.
Shine.
Okay, we're moving, I'm sorry, I should've told you in the beginning, you only have three minutes, but we're moving to give you some.
I'll try and be brief.
That's okay.
Thank you. To this council, you're almost succeeded in moving this loud music and stuff from Greenwood Road and Jewella. But when they leave Greenwood and Jewella, they come out in our neighborhoods, and they come in droves. On the weekend, it's worse. At night, it's hard to sleep, you can't relax. Mr. Mayor, I voted for you several times. If given the opportunity, I'd probably vote for you again. But your interpretation of our city becoming the next great city of the South is not working where I live. I am a tax-paying, registered voter, I am a law-abiding citizen. I'd like to ask this council, including my councilman.
Amen.
Can't something be done about this boombox noise up and down these streets, day in, day out, it doesn't stop? I'm asking you, Mayor, you councilman, to help us, we need some help. When I play my radio or my TV, my neighbor don't know it's on, but everybody else wanna pan their music and their noise off on us. There's three things that happens in the hood where the word really gets out. It's a fire, a fight, a funeral. The word gets out. I truly believe if, if some citations or some punishment or something was issued for these people running up and down these streets with all this noise, I do believe if that can be done, I think the word will get out. I think it'll help us a lot. My last comment, Mr. Mayor, when you fell and broke your leg, you're about two doors from where I live. I thought about coming over, helping pick you up, but I saw no reason for both of us to be in the hospital.
Wow, boy.
We're just glad to see you up and around.
All right.
Oh, yeah.
Recovery. Thank you so much.
Mr. Avery, just before you go, the chief.
Yes, sir.
Will, will have the community liaison officer to, to check the area out, and, and we will make sure, since you've been a 35-year resident and, of that area, we want to make sure, with, with chief, since you're here, we want to make sure that Mr. Avery, wow, I like that, Mr. Avery, how you had to look up to the chief.
We, we, we'll take care of it.
Please.
Pronto. I heard everything you said.
All right.
And we'll have somebody in his house conversate with him tomorrow.
That's right.
And we'll follow from there.
All right.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Mr. Avery?
Yes, sir.
I, I appreciate your concern, but first of all, I didn't break my legs, I ruptured, I ruptured a tendon, and as hard as it may be for you to believe, not only did I not need your help to get up, I didn't need anybody's help to get up.
Wow.
I, I got myself up.
All right.
And, but I appreciate your concern, your consideration, and here's what I want you to understand, going forward, you need to make sure that you don't speed around a red light over on McDaniel.
I agree.
Because my guys are gonna be there looking for everybody, and if we happen to catch you, it'll be your bad luck, too.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Avery, for coming down. And if, Mr. Avery, if they catch you running a red light, a stop sign or something, if you need a little help in paying it, come on, let me know, here.
I remember that guy.
I got $10 towards your ticket.
Thank you so much.
Okay, we have next, Reverend Lenis Mays. Look, I'm sorry, wait a minute, Reverend Mays, I'm sorry, I believe, wait a minute, I believe our, our, our good friend that was here just before you.
The problem?
Yeah.
Problem, Craig?
Uh, property standard, Mr. Craig B. Lee. Mr. Lee, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't know who had your request, I don't know whether Jeff or Michael had it, but I got it now.
Can somebody help me with the machine?
You need some help with the machine?
Yeah.
Jackie, please.
USB accessible?
Yes, Jackie will facilitate it.
I'm not sure. That's just a camera. That's just over at projector. Just a projection? Can the USB?
That's just a camera.
Okay, okay. All right, sir. I'll print the photos out the next time. Craig Lee.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Not to cut you off, Craig, if you have something that you want to use, to get to the projection screens, if you want to let someone else come, we can have staff come back, they may be able to get you some.
Would you want to, Lee?
Yeah.
All right, Reverend Mays, please come up.
Charles, uh.
He's right, he just came in.
Reverend's in back.
There he is.
Ready to go.
Charles.
Help get him, confer with him, Charles, to see what he needs to.
Pastor Mays, Newman Sidonia Missionary Baptist Church, 335 East Azalea, thank you to my good friend Craig Lee, thank you, Councilman Shine, Chairman, and to the rest of the committee. I just have a few concerns, and I want to thank, let me, let me do this, get this out the way, I want to thank those that participated in the parades and the different events that we had concerning black history. But as I was sitting there listening a few minutes ago, I can understand firing Mr. Grigsby, but what I don't understand is that once someone is fired, it would look like it would be feasible for this committee, or for the mayor, to have someone in place to let the projects that is already, and the bond proposal that the citizens of this city agreed on, look like that should have already been put in place by either the, the, Mr. Grigsby office to have this stuff already done, so when he got fired or whatever, or either this council to petition the mayor's office to have someone in place to make sure that the concerns of the citizens of this city be able to go forward. It's kind of looked to me like, you know, it's done backwards, and, and it's, and it's no criticism to anybody, it just seemed like it's being done backwards, because to me, if I'm gonna fire somebody, in which I'm not against firing people, if I'm gonna fire somebody, it would be feasible to either make sure that that individual serve out the balance of his term, and then let him go or whatever, or however the term works, to, to make sure that the things that are already in place, Mr. Shine, to make sure that those things are done for the citizens of the city, because we've been waiting over three years, and I just being, being a taxpayer and a citizen of this city, and one that come before this city council, just does not seem, this just doesn't seem fair to me, that the citizens of this city has to wait now for either the mayor to appoint a new individual to come forward to do these projects that needs to be done, since Mr. Grigsby is no longer here. It just seems to me that something is just not right with the overall way it's being done, and I notice a lot of people out there that's watching this, that's gonna also be upset as well, because it just doesn't seem that the roads are in deployable condition, the taxpayers of this city that voted for the $175 million bond proposal, this council that also voted for the increase in the water, you know, it just doesn't seem right to me now that the citizens of this city has to bear the burden of, of having to wait even longer, and that our streets now, the streets in the MLK area, in other, Councilman Shine, in, in your district, District F, in all the districts, we know how bad these streets are, and it was my understanding from the beginning that there was gonna be some kind of precedent set for.
Uh, Pastor, you got one more three minutes.
That's fine.
And just kind of keep it to what you.
Right, right, and, and that's what I'm doing, that's what I'm doing, but I just wanted to bring some, because I know that this council and, and this mayor's office do things in more professional order than what I'm seeing this being done in, because it's sounding to me, my good friend, Councilman Shine, that, and I know you've been here a long time, and, and I know you and Hook started a lot of stuff that we got, that we have privilege of now, I understand that, but I never seen this being done, that you put the horse before the court, or you put the court before the horse, or Mr. Everson, and, and, and I just don't understand it, me just being me, I, I don't understand how is it that we don't have somebody in place that when Mr. Grigsby was fired, which that's you all right to do, but in order for the city to function and go forward in these streets that are in deployable condition, and the citizens that voted on this $175 million bond proposal, we shouldn't be, have to be put on hold just because of, we no longer have Mr. Grigsby. So, you know, with that being said, I, you know, I appreciate what's being done here, but to me, it just doesn't seem like it's right, and with all due respect, and I know most have disagreed with me, and, but we still love each other, we're still gonna keep the same dialogue, I still respect, respect you, and I hope that you respect me, and those that don't, that's between you and your God, I don't have anything to do with that. I tell my church members all the time, I'm not responsible for what people do to me, but I am responsible for what I do to people. So, with that being said, I, I'm glad that you all tabled this, so that you can look into it a little bit more, get with the mayor's office, and figure out, look at here, the citizens of this city, Mr. Oliver Jenkins, you know this as well, and Sam Jenkins, and to the whole council, Jeff, my councilman, and Rose, the citizens of this city has waited long enough, and I hear, Sam, I heard you say, you say it's time to start doing something. Let's show these people that, 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 that projects that they voted for in the bond proposal, that it's time for payment to start going on the streets, that's why people are complaining, because we, we feel like, in, in the African-American community, as well as other communities, we feel like that this thing has been tabled long enough, Mr. Shine, and that it's time to move forward, there should be somebody in place that is capable enough to say, hey, look at here, let's get this done, and, and I hope that you all would do that. Once again, I thank you for your time, I appreciate all that you do, you know, we're good friends, we're gonna be that, but with this being done, the way it's being done, and I know it probably wasn't meant, the intent wasn't meant to be done this way, but since it's being done this way, I just think that it's out of order, and it should be done a better, there should be somebody to step up to say, hey, we gonna do this, since we have gotten rid of Mr. Grigsby. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Alright, Mr. Craig B. Lee.
I have to bring you guys the photos on the next meeting. Craig Lee, Craig Lee, ten thirty-five Houston Street, Shreveport, Louisiana. On January the twenty-eighth, two thousand fourteen, my house almost burned down. And my house almost burned down due to the fact of a critical issue that I've advocated about for well over a decade, that deals with fair housing ordinance, and that's basically what I'm here to talk to you about today. The fire was started by some squatters in the backyard of the property located at ten thirty Prospect Avenue. Myself and Councilman Everson live in the Fairfield Historic District. This is a very critical issue. My neighbor, Elena Curry, came in, and she's gonna speak as well. The fire jumped onto her fence, and then jumped onto my storage unit in the back, damaging my property and almost burning down the home. As a matter of fact, firefighters said if my neighbor had not been home and called nine one one, not only my house, but the neighbor's house, who is renting, and Ms. Elena Curry's two houses, would have been burned that day because the wind was so high. Now, why has this situation happened? This leads me to today's discussion. There's a subhuman individual who does not even possess the title or deed to lease this property, but he's paid a few taxes, and he's renting out a condemned property. Now, Ms. Fornell has been very good in property standards in discussing this, but this is a critical issue facing the city of Shreveport, because you got slum people, and I call them subhuman people, that are going around, paying a few taxes, and literally illegally renting facilities. And why? Because there's no legislation that stops them from doing this. This is a condemned property. It's approximately two thousand square feet. It only has one electric breaker. That's a fire hazard. It has substandard plumbing. Ms. Curry is going to talk about that raw sewer back into the house with the last tenants that lived there, a young white couple, they had to move out, standing raw sewer in the house. And then the sewage runs down into her yard, and this creates a major health hazard with mosquitoes. So now we're talking about the West Nile virus, and ultimately, we're talking about property depreciation. Now, we've done a good job in the Fairfield Historic District of trying to beautify and attract
Dreamo, go ahead, huh?
We've done a good job of trying to attract individuals and increase property value over in that particular area, but when you have individuals that are coming into not only the Fairfield Historic District, but Highland, Lakeside, Cooper Road, whatever, and these individuals are not legally owning property, there's no way they should be leasing these substandard housing out to individuals. So, we have no fair housing on the books, which would regulate the landlords into what they should be able to do, and there is no substantive legislation that prevents individuals who have no legal title or deed of property from leasing property. And this is where Ms. Fornell says her hands are tied, because the council needs to act on this in putting legislative measures in place.
Now, Craig, just for clarification, because I think we are aware of some, because if you'll recall, I think early on the, during this council's term, we passed the, within the first year, I think, we passed the substandard housing, or minimum living Minimum living conditions. George. And I think there are some challenges with enforcement there, but just for, so I can understand, the particular situation with the house that you just mentioned, had that, had Dorothy had a chance to look at that?
Oh yeah, they've looked at it.
She did.
And it was condemned a year ago.
Uh-huh.
And
Condemned?
Yeah, it was condemned for the reasons that I listed.
Okay, so
One electric breaker
So they had issued like a property standard
Absolutely, it was signed on the house and everything.
For demolition?
No, just signed up, saying condemned.
Okay. And then, and then, because I think what happens sometimes, and I don't know how we could regulate this, but I think what happens sometimes, is people do, they pick these up at tax sales, and then they tell people, yeah, you can pay me in cash or a money order, and there's no paper trail of that. We don't know it's being rented out, there's no way, other than maybe if they have utilities hooked up or something like that, that usually, you know, that way it gets in the system. But sometimes people are actually living in these structures without hooking up the utilities, and somebody's charging rent for that, which is, you know, obviously, I agree with your description of that activity, it's very frustrating.
And here lies the issue, of course, the people don't know their legal rights, of course, and they're trying to find somewhere to stay. Maybe they wouldn't pass the muster of an actual application in a better facility. But as I told some of the landlords a few years ago, you're just not renting to your tenant, what you do with that property impacts the other property owners in the community. And so, now you burned down my fence, my neighbor's fence, it damaged my unit, so that, those were the pictures that I was gonna show you, I'll do that the next week. But, but once a resident now makes a formal complaint, now the people may not make the complaint, but once now someone like myself makes the complaint, we gotta have some kind of action, because this individual does not own this property. He does not own this property, and now he leases out, so the week of the fire, which had a sign that said condemned, that weekend, Mr. Shine, he moved, and I just gotta call it like, I see it savage individuals in with pit bulls, and cars that don't run, and I went up and told them, y'all might as well don't unpack, 'cause y'all gonna have to leave, because this is impacting the entire community, and we're gonna get it handled, but this is how the overall city now starts to look bad. So when you all were talking earlier about Whole Foods attracting those type of entities, when you have diminished property value in your inner core, especially when you're talking about your historic areas, this creates a situation where people don't want to come invest in the inner core. So, and so what we want to do is not create more vacant lots, but maintain housing structures so they can be done properly. But when you have individuals that are not really regulated in terms of acquiring property and then leasing them out, we got a major problem. Because this impacts everybody that's putting up dollars. Now Jeff didn't put up as much money as I did in terms of fixing up his property, 'cause mine was kind of messed up, his was more expensive than mine.
Person before me fixed it up nice, so I was lucky for them.
But, but we've been working together in that area to appreciate property values, and this happens throughout the entire city. People will just literally come, put signs up, and say for lease, hit people, because they don't know any better from that overall standpoint, and this is what we actually have. So I'm asking the council to definitely look into this, because Ms. Fornell's hands are tied, they don't have anybody to actually go out. The house is still condemned, she told me outside, it's still condemned, but he's moved somebody into a condemned house.
Let me, let me, let me say this. Could you get with the city attorney and
Maybe the police chief as well?
Uh Because I think those people have to come through the city to buy that
All the pairs, the city ought to pair them.
To buy those properties.
They just pay taxes.
Not necessarily.
Yeah, it may go through
I mean, some come through the city, and then some come through the pair.
Right, and some do it otherwise. Some, as Craig said, don't even own them.
Yeah.
Sometimes they get a quit claim, Dean, from somebody who says they don't own it, they may not have any other
And Joe, as Ms. Fornell just indicated, these particular subhumans here, this is their standing practice, they do this from Bojor, coming into Shreveport, and they possess illegally, in terms of this process, hundreds of these properties.
Uh, Dale
Yes, sir.
Would you think about, maybe you and the city attorney, think about what we need to do in order to at least get a hand on this, since maybe we have no laws enacted, and Jeff will be glad to take the ball and run with it, and see if we can come up with some legislation that would help to take care of this particular situation.
Well, to see if maybe we have existing things on our books.
It has come up before, there is a way that you can force some of it when somebody, when it's proven, but the big problem, I think, as Craig is pointing out, is just like our minimum living conditions, unless that person living there is willing to come in and say, this is who I paid, this I paid them, and here's a copy of my lease, you know, a neighbor can't prosecute that. So there's some specific issues with that, you know, we've talked about it before, even in these chambers, about these folks who will, as Craig said, take possession of a property, take some unsuspecting renter, convince them that they own it, and then rent it to them, you know, cash payments. Sometimes it's discovered when they try to hook up water, utilities, and can't
Absolutely.
Because they found out that person doesn't own it, but by then, they may have been there, you know, two or three months, or they may feel, I got nowhere else to go, you know, which is a major challenge in a lot of what Bonnie and her guys tried to do. So, it's something I'll get with Terry, but it's a larger issue, because you get into property rights, you get into state laws, and it's a much bigger issue, you know, the most that can happen, probably at this level is what's there, is we can prosecute the person for fraud or theft or something like that, if they're discovered. But there's a larger issue that makes it hard to find out who's actually doing this, because of the rules on how some of this property can be acquired.
Well, then you also have to have a legislative appetite to place some degree of responsibility on the person who's renting the property.
Absolutely.
And unless there is the appetite for that, which is, we saw during the rental code discussion from several years ago, it leaves you in this netherland, because as Dale mentioned, the idea of trying to use a person who is the renter as the basis of building your case, which is the shakiest, least reliable aspect of this particular set of circumstances to deal with, creates problems. If you put the onus on the person who actually is putting out the rent sign, and collecting the rent, and taking advantage of these types of situations, then you do have something that is actionable. But that takes actions from a legislative standpoint that we'll present to you, and Julie and Terry will get together and give you all a list of what those options are.
I recall that discussion, I think that is valid, I mean, now that we've had this in place, and with good, you know, with every good intention, I think there are some ways it could be improved, and I think I remember the discussion you're talking about, be glad to take another look at that. But what I'd like to do is, and I think this is an important thing to think about in the big, but also in the specifics for Mr. Lee's situation, maybe we can get together afterwards and just make sure that both the police department, property standards, city attorney, kind of understand what's going on in this immediate situation.
Oh yeah.
Make sure if there's any specific action
And I think that one is moving, Craig and Dorothy talked, and that's being dealt with, the burn place and condemnation, as I appreciate it. Craig, you really get into that larger issue, how that happened in the first place with this non-owner basically renting out that property.
But the immediate situation, you think
I believe that's being moved, Craig.
Yeah, it's moving, but the people are there with the pit bulls, and cars in the bag, and I don't want my good friend Willie Shaw to come get, have to get me out of jail, 'cause trust me, had my house got burned down that day, somebody would've got whooped, I'm just gonna be honest with you.
And I understand, Councilman Everson, that the process will eventually lead to that structure being condemned, Craig's issue is though it's in the meantime, this person is renting.
Yeah, the other person is renting.
Well, I think maybe we can get it secured faster than we can get it torn down, and that might make it hard for them to get in or out of their
And as I told some of the landowners, Mr. Brock, one of the good guys from Bayou Classic that does a good job, he has two houses on the street, I say, look, if you guys don't get this, you're not just renting to this person, you're renting in a community. So, so the neighbors that now invest have to have a vested interest in this overall deal, and that's pretty much where this is going, because the property owners have now pretty much said what actually needs to be done. So I thank you guys for
Right, thank you for coming down, and I think Jeff will be grabbing this and getting with Terry, and we'll go from there.
Sounds great.
And see what we can do. Okay, next, we have, uh, Ms., Ms., is this Curry? Is this Ms. Curry? Ms. Curry, please. Give us your name and your address, please.
Curry. Ten forty-six Prospect Street.
Did you all, B, did you get that, or you could, okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, I would just like to piggyback off of what my neighbor, Mr. Lee, has reported.
Right.
Um, and I heard you, Mr. Everson, state that perhaps these people are not aware of it, I want to start there, they are very much so aware of it. I have been reporting this since two thousand and nine, before this person even got this, that's how long that plumbing has been running down my driveway. I have pictures, I have pictures of, I've gone inside, I've met every neighbor in that house, and have talked to them about this, and have talked to them and told them that they do not have to accept this type of, you know, condition. And a lot of times, what has happened, as Craig has said, many of these people may not be able to find a property that they can afford to pay fair rent or whatever for the condition of the property, so they will take this, and it's a very nice house, with some attention, this could be a property that could make a nice home for someone. I looked into purchasing it myself, but I was not gonna allow this person who had only tax interests in the property, try to sell me a deed that he did not have. He does not have this. I have another property that he's doing the same thing to, this young lady, somehow or another, this gentleman supposedly worked with a mortgage company, and he came in lieu of these deeds or whatever, when this company went out of business, and what, and if I am not telling the truth, I am not telling the truth based on what this lady, the renter has told me, that this man has gotten hold of this one, of this deed to the house, and he only is, I guess, the tax part of it. And he has a percentage of it, but he does not own or has, the mortgage is supposed to supersede that. And so what's happened is, the property that is next to my home, the family, and it kind of saddens me, because the gentleman that owned the house and his niece, they somehow took out a second mortgage to supposedly pay the taxes of what this man said he had paid, but in actuality, he had come and paid maybe twelve hundred dollars, at the time I had researched it, and I think that's about all he had in the property. And when I spoke with the young lady, who was living in the house, her family owned the house, this man had told these people that they had to pay somewhat of a mortgage, basically, to pay him back in so many years, every month, three hundred and fifty dollars. So they were paying the mortgage on that house and paying him three hundred and fifty dollars a month, supposedly to pay the taxes.
He just had taxes involved in it?
That's all he had, but he's been making these people think that they have to do this, and then come and get a subpoena, I'm not a subpoena, a, to get them put out. And then the people get afraid, and they move out of their property, and I was there yelling, telling this young lady, you do not have to move out of that property, you know what I'm saying, if you gotta go down and redeem your property, pay your taxes, you don't have to give up your family property. She, everybody does not have knowledge of things. She got scared, she moved. Then, ever since then, I've had people moving in and out, I've met the couple that Craig was talking about, the young people in there, I have videos of us, I have a video of their shower, I want you all to see this, and this is graphic, this is graphic, with feces coming out of the shower, I have it on video, if you'd like to see it.
And so I take it they don't have running water?
Yes, they do have running water, okay, and I'm gonna tell you this, whoever it is, I mean, the owner, is sending people to fix that house, now, I'm gonna let y'all know something, I've been dealing with this, and Craig knows, since two thousand and nine, I have, on the other side of my house, I live on one side, and I have another house that I'm renting, the house is nice, I fixed it up and everything else, how would you like, sir, to have your property where you have water running down your driveway, no matter if it's sunshine or whatever, your driveway stays wet all the time, and then when I call and I report this, they will send somebody out, and then they will say, well, it's just water, or it's whatever, water brings mosquitoes, regardless if it's clean water or whatever, I don't want my property, it erodes my property. water or whatever. I don't want my property. It erodes my, my, my property. Okay? My, my yard, you know, it, it's a rental property, but it stays wet, but it's right next to my place.
Who is it? Who, who is it?
Sir?
Is that somebody from the city that's coming out?
People have come from the city at least eight or nine times, and every time they've come, they've given them a 10-day notice to repair it, and it's never been followed through. There've been notices and notices and notices and notices. I've raised holy with these people, and I'm being told, well, we're gonna send them a letter. And the last time that letter stuff came up, I was like, no, don't send them a letter. I said, when are you all going to make a fine? Put some money behind it. Do something that's gonna get their attention. Well, I want to bring to the council's attention that my neighbor in 2009, if I'm not mistaken, his name was Mr. Police. That was the family that owned the house that this man scared and made the niece move out. That man, I, I kept going to them and asking them about that water going down the driveway. Well, this old man was very, uh, I don't know if he had rheumatoid arthritis or whatever, but he was really deformed and crippled. The young lady, uh, refused to do anything. You know how young people are? She might have been 25 or so, and I know she did have some sort of income, but she would not pay for a plumber. I had even found a plumber too that was gonna go over there and do it for nearly nothing for them. Well, instead of paying hardly anything, this old man climbed under that house, and with the plumbing and wires touching the ground, he died under that house. He died under that house. Yes, sir. He died under that house after I had reported it over and over and over again to the city that this plumbing was messed up. That man, I guess because he didn't want any, and it wasn't in his strife, I was like, Ms. Police, y'all have to do something. You know, I can get you a plumber. Instead of getting a plumber, he crawled under that house, and that man got electrocuted under that house.
Oh, wow.
Yes, sir.
It, it sounds like, it sounds like this particular situation, there's a lot of details to it.
It does.
Then I'd like to hear more about it from you. Um, if I could, um, could I ask you, after the, after we wrap up the meeting in a few minutes, I'll get with you and maybe we can talk with Dorothy, and I'll, I'll take a look at some of that. We'll see what we can figure out.
Let me ask, Malcolm, would you come up one minute, please? Is it anything that you can add, uh, when it comes to buying, uh, paying, uh, the back city taxes, and I know we'd have to have somebody down here from the parish speak, uh, uh, I mean, is it anything you can add to the discussion?
Well, Mr. Shine, what I can add is I see this a lot. Uh, I get calls. It saddens me when people call me and say, I'm living in a house, I have a, an apparent deed. I had a call today. The deed had never been recorded. This man's not the assessed owner, but he thought he was. It's, it's terrible what some people do to other people. Um, you know, we try our hardest to sell as many of the adjudicated properties as we can.
Right.
Um, I don't give legal advice over the telephone.
Right.
Because I'm not a, I'm not a lawyer.
Right.
Um, but I do listen to their, what they have to say, and I try to advise them on where they need to go if it's a legal issue. Um, I think it's, I think it's a bigger issue than the city council or the parish. I think it's with the state of Louis, I mean, I think it's a
Right.
state issue, a, a property rights issue, because you do have people that have an ownership interest in the property that bought it at tax sale, but do they have the right to rent it? I don't know. That's a legal issue. So, um, I don't know if I answered your question.
You did, you did. I, I would, I would ask, uh, since I'm looking at you again, you are the mayor, one, uh, whoever, uh, our contact is at the state legislature. I don't know whether it be, uh, Senator Greg Tarver, you all seem to have, um, close ties, uh, with the senator, uh, with, uh, our state representative, uh, Barbara Norton, uh, either, uh, Representative Roy Barrell, who was a member of this distinguished body who now, uh, is in Baton Rouge helping to run the state. If you all would ask him to look into that and, uh, to let him know that, to let them know that this is a, a question, I mean, this is a problem, a, a situation that, uh, if they could, uh, you know, give us some insight into it, because I think you're right. I think we probably would have to look at it from a state, um, level two, uh, to see what we can, you know, to, to, to see what we can find out on how we can alleviate this situation. Uh, we're not gonna, okay, we're not gonna be able to solve this, uh, right here, thinking Malcolm, we're not gonna be able to solve this today at this particular council meeting, but, uh, Jeff has agreed to, uh, throw a rope around this and see if we can get something done, and, and Councilman Sam Jenkins, I believe, might wanna work with him. Sam?
Well, yes. Uh, well, one of the things I would like to see, help we could do at the city level, is if we find a tax buyer who has a property violation of any of our codes, let's not sell to that person again until they've complied with what our codes require. Uh, I do think some of the issues, it's gonna take some legislation out of Baton Rouge, but I just think we shouldn't continue to allow people, uh, to purchase the property if all they're gonna have is more and more properties and, and all we're gonna have is more and more repeat offenses. So, I, I would hope that maybe we can look at it from that perspective at least, and if we have a tax buyer and property standards or anybody else involved with the city has found them in some kind of violation of what we do, then, uh, maybe some kind of flag can be put out there that we don't sell another tax property, adjudicated property to that individual until they come to comply with what we require here at the city. That was, that's one of the things I would like to say, still.
Let me.
Councilor Shine?
Yeah.
I hit the buzzer to speak.
Uh, fine, and when, and Sammy, when, when Councilwoman McCullough gets through, we're gonna let you come up because I know your bus will be coming by soon.
Malcolm's taking.
Well, the one thing that I.
Is Malcolm is gonna take you? Okay, right.
The one thing that I wanted to share with the council and past experience with the adjudicated properties, and I think what we need to pay close attention to, Craig, one thing I discovered as a cap, as a, as a commissioner, um, when the adjudicated properties would come across the agenda to be approved, um, you know, you have what you call a GO number, and you also had a map that actually matched the description of the GO number. What to God be the glory to my discovery on some of the properties in this, in, in, at that time District Two, because I was on the commission, the GO numbers were not matching property descriptions. So, you know, that, if your dad went and bought some property, he passed away, and you're thinking it's yours, and the GO number's not matching what your, you know, what your daddy purchased, I would think that would give the enemy leeway into coming in and possibly, I mean, and then I would think it's political too, that gives them some leeway to say, hey, well, you know, the numbers are not matching the description of the property, we can go in and we can claim this is ours and rent it out. And I watched that for months and months and months at a time. That's what was really happening. If your number is not matching the description of your property, then your generations to come are gonna have some issues, and maybe that's where we're suffering from, some of those same issues. Now, there's no telling how long that's been going on, and Mr. Statlander, you know, maybe you might wanna consider looking into that also. But, you know, if I buy a piece of property and I pass away, I wanna know that my children will get that piece of property. But if it goes up for adjudication, you understand what I'm saying? And then it's put on the agenda, and the GO number, which I purchased it under, doesn't match what I purchased, what happens? I mean, does it make sense? So, I think we need to play, pay close attention to the details of the geographical numbers as well as the geographical site itself, because a lot of this is going on at that time in District Two as well as now in District Eight. So, I just wanted to kind of throw that in for the record.
Okay, uh, we're gonna get Sammy to come up, and then I have a request from Ms., uh, is that Clinton? Is it, is it a Ms. Clinton? Okay, and all of you all together, right, that is Clinton? All right.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Uh, before Sammy, and, and just to put a footnote on, uh, on the property discussion, I, I wanna make the council aware, uh, that, uh, that there have been a ongoing effort to address a lot of property-related issues at the state level. Uh, Monty Moore is in fact a member of a task force that's been working with folks from Baton Rouge and Monroe and New Orleans and what have you, trying to address a, a lot of these types of issues. Um, and there has not been, uh, dating back to my tenure in the legislature, any significant, uh, resolution. There has been some incremental progress, but nothing, uh, nearly in line, uh, with what's necessary from a state level to help, uh, address these types of issues. So, I, I don't want anybody to leave you with the impression that there's a bill that somebody could file this particular session that may end up alleviating this situation. Uh, any relief that's going to come in the short and near term, and unfortunately probably the long term as well, because those trends at the state level will probably continue, will have to come, uh, here at the local level. And so as, as indicated, uh, we're gonna task Terry and Julie, uh, with coming up with some specific recommendations that might be considered at this local level that can hold the folks who actually should be held responsible, responsible. And of course, it will be whether or not that's something that we have an appetite for, uh, to be able to actually put into effect.
Thank you. All right, Sammy, roll it.
Very well. Sammy Mears, 1901 Saginaw Boulevard, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71101. I first would like to say that I'm very happy that the things are going to work out now for the Shreveport City Dog Park, because I was asked from quite a few people today how that's progressing, and I told them if they just get the opportunity to tune in, that I'm sure that something good will be coming now, and things will be moving forward. So, I'm looking forward to that. And of course, as you pretty well know, I could not be here two weeks ago because of the ice storm that happened. I would have wanted to, however, I knew that when the ice storm was coming, I didn't wanna take the risk coming down and getting stranded or possibly breaking my neck, arm, or leg. So, I felt the best thing to do was just get my grocery shopping done and then just be at home, because I feel that safety is very important. So, it's not anything that I would have done. And besides, Cedric, I'm not the one who said, ice storm, would you like to come and keep me away from the city council? I did not do any such of a thing. I mean, the last person to pull that stunt. And the thing is that I also would like to say that I did get to attend a concert that Horace and English was involved in at the Hurley Music School. It was a coffee concert, and he does a great job of singing, so if he's watching, I'm not really sure if he is or not, but I was there to enjoy his opera singing. It was about coffee, and this girl that was in the concert, we kept on and on about coffee this, coffee that, and he called her a funny name, and everyone got a big laugh out of it. And I told Horace afterwards, had he called her a carrot growing in a field of rabbits, I likely would have fallen out of my chair laughing. So, I did get his autograph. They had coffee and cookies afterwards, which was exciting. And also, Monty Walpert, I went to see him right after my birthday, because I went on the 10th, and got to spend a little time with him and Cherie just for a moment about my birthday. Afterwards, I went to the Eastburg Co. McDonald's to celebrate and had a great time. I got off the Highland bus at the corner of Olive and Highland, and I knew that the senior lunch had already finished. I just didn't go to it because I knew they would have made a big deal. Oh, your birthday, King, please. So, I decided to have a little time to myself because I rightfully deserved that. And if they would have said something, I would have said, please, I just ate. And that's something that happened over at Monty's office. When, when Cherie said something funny before I left, I said, listen, I had coffee, don't ruin it. And Monty laughed so hard. By the way, his arm is in a sling and cast, and he needs prayer for healing. But he did get a good laugh, and I said, don't ruin it. Thank you.
Sammy, thank you. I just got word from Mr. Thompson that your 10 minutes is up. Okay, Ms. Clinton? Please.
Good evening. Can y'all hear me?
Yeah.
Mayor Glover and, uh, City Councilman.
Give us your name. I'm sorry, Ms. Clinton.
Yes, sir. Pinky Clint, Pinky Clint.
Right, address so they can get it over there.
The address is 1920 North Hearn Avenue, apartment 301.
Okay.
I'm speaking in reference to, uh, the Grace House at 1134 College Street.
Okay.
Yes, sir. I run a emergency shelter, and first of all, I wanna thank y'all for your support that you've given us and housing, uh, Mr. Jeff, Ms. Rose. I went to school up there, let me with you, Mr. Shine.
I remember that, baby.
Anyway, what we're doing over there is we're housing people from all of your districts, and, and, and we need further support to try to keep these people off the street in abandoned houses, decreased crime. And, uh, I'm, I'm not, my mom gonna let my time run out, and I wanna thank.
We're gonna give you some extra time.
I know they're in a shame.
You are really here for something. Now, are they with you right there?
Yes, sir. These are some of them.
You all wanna stand in, in support?
Yes, they're in support. That we need help, additional help, and we're doing a good job over downtown.
What's the name of the group again?
Grace Community, yeah.
Raison?
You've been over there to speak, uh, to speak.
Y'all have actually been there to speak to the group.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we've been doing this sometime.
Does she leave any money with you?
Oh, I can get some money.
There you go. You got plenty of money now.
You got plenty of money. I guess, I know, yeah.
All right.
Thank y'all so much.
Jeff might come up there and bring y'all a few dollars too.
Yeah, Ms. Jeff, you know I saw you too late. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
All right, thank you. Uh, Ms. Clinton, before you go, I think, uh, Mr. Jenkins here might wanna
Yes, sir.
give you some encouragement, some money.
Well, 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 yes, I do wanna encourage you.
Thank you.
I'm sure that, uh, Councilwoman McCullough and, uh, Councilman Jeff Everson will make a donation on my behalf also.
Hey!
Oh, my God. Yes, we will certainly look out for you.
I think Councilman Shine volunteered to.
Do what we can to assist you.
I appreciate it.
If we can. But I really have another subject I was bringing up, Mr., uh.
Yeah.
Thank you so, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Jenkins, if you don't mind, before, before you leave, uh, I wanna make sure we distinguish Grace House from Grace Home.
That's correct. We're a Grace Community Outreach Ministries, and you're appropriate. Great.
Okay.
Thank you.
And Grace Home is a, is a hospice.
Hospice.
Associated with, uh, with Charlotte. So, these are, these are.
We're about trying to bring people.
You all applied for a.
Helping people to lead.
From, uh, from the, from the city.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Civil appropriations.
Okay, that will come on the, uh, Jeff's committee.
Yes, sir.
Jeff is very, Jeff is very liberal at times when, when the.
Yes, sir.
When organizations are about helping the community.
Thank you so much.
So, I'm kinda, I'm, I'm kinda for sure that Jeff is gonna be leaning your way.
Thank you. Thank y'all.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman, it was a, it was a. I wanted to, uh, extend condolences to the family of Ms. Bobby Scott. Ms. Scott was a longtime employee of the City of Shreveport. Uh, she worked in SPD, and she last worked in, uh, Community Development. Uh, she passed away and was funeralized this past week. Uh, thank you, Mayor Glover, uh, for the, uh, sympathy and the statement, uh, that you sent was well received by the family, uh, as well as Ms. Bonnie Moore in Community Development heard some of the employees, uh, did show up at the funeral services and made the city's presence known. Uh, I did not wanna, uh, admit, uh, mentioning something on, on behalf of Ms. Scott and her quiet strength, and, uh, she made a very good, uh, impression, uh, for the city on everyone. There was a lot of compliments, uh, about her, uh, at those services. So, I, I just want the founder to know, among Ms. Betty Reed and her three children, that our thoughts are still with them at this time. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Uh, before we reconvene back into the regular meeting, did I miss anyone? Was it anyone? Uh, you know, I don't wanna say that I didn't, uh, and 'cause I have been accused of not giving some people an opportunity to talk. So, if not, we will reconvene.
I have to speak, Councilman Shine.
Now, do, do you need to speak now, or you would want until we reconvene?
If we have reconvened, once we reconvene, I want to speak. I was letting you know.
Okay, okay. We will now reconvene back into our regular meeting. Councilwoman McCullough.
Yes, earlier I referenced Resolution 33, which I do, and as I have expressed to.